All right, good evening, everyone. We're going to start the Council Infrastructure Committee meeting here at 6:30 tonight. And we have three items, four items on our agenda and project updates. So, we're going to start with our first one, which is AB 7495, franchise agreement with Seattle Limited Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless. It's an action item. And Sheldon is going to kick us off on this. This is continuing from last month's meeting where we had quite a bit of discussion on this and we wanted some more information and we'll see where we are.
Thank you, Bill. As you mentioned, this was an item that was discussed at the last committee meeting in November. There was this number of questions that were asked from the committee, which we've responded to and it was in the packet, sent out as part of the packet. And as part of all of this, Verizon representatives are here this evening to give you a presentation, approximately about a 10-minute-long presentation. We also have legal representation from Ogden Murphy Wallace to help answer any other questions that may come up regarding legal issues and so forth. And I guess with that, I'm just going to jump right into having Verizon come up and give a presentation. So, Leila Vega from the Real Estate Services of Verizon is here and Kim Allen from the Wireless Policy Group is here to give the presentation. So, and I will pull the presentation up.
Hi, Will. Hi, good to see you. My name's Leila Vega. I'm a network engineer. I'm the real estate program manager for small cells in Washington State outside the Seattle Core. So, what that means is all of the site consultants who are building small cells in Washington outside of the city of Seattle report through me and I'm responsible for just making sure we've got the rights in place to secure these facilities and standards in place.
Good evening, council members. My name is Kim Allen. I'm with the Wireless Policy Group. We've been hired as consultants on zoning and permitting for small cells in jurisdictions throughout the Pacific Northwest for the Verizon rollout of small cells. So, we hope to be able to answer all of your questions tonight and wrap this issue up for you tonight.
So, I'm going to start by taking you through a bit of the background of why we need small cells. The basic issue is the just rampant growth in wireless data usage. And it comes down to the fact that more people are using more devices in more places than ever before and our phones are not just phones anymore. And it also isn't just our phones connected. We're entering a world where your streetlights are connected, where my watch is connected, where my friend's insulin pump is connected, where more and more devices are being connected to the Internet and things that we never thought would be connected are being connected through wireless data. So, some stats just to highlight that. From 2010 to 2016, mobile data use increased 35 times, 35-fold. 52% of American households are wireless only and the majority of households that have a landline, they don't use it. It's for emergency purposes only. The average American household has 13 connected devices. A connected device is not necessarily just your phone or your tablet. A connected device might be your smart light bulb. It might be your smart doorbell. It might be a security camera at your home so that you can check it when you're on the go. It might be, well, any number of things. The list is endless. So, more and more, this is putting a strain on our network and creating places where we have insufficient capacity for our users. So, I want to just explain what that means as opposed to coverage issues. We're used to thinking about wireless coverage issues meaning places where we just don't have antennas there to provide any signal, so there's a gap where there's no signal. Capacity issues happen when we have signal, but there are more users trying to put more data traffic through that, through the facilities that exist than those facilities are designed to support. So, what happens when that situation occurs is you get slower data speeds, video buffering issues, sometimes you get call disruptions, like you might be more likely to drop a call, and just general connection problems with your, with your mobile device or with your hotspot or with your, you know, in-computer, you know, data connection. So, what small cells do is they allow us to put antennas, oh, antennas closer to the users so that we can get additional capacity without creating interference with our macrosites. So, I'll speak to that in a little more detail in just a minute. The other thing that small cells are great for is provided, providing targeted coverage. So, I'm sure you're all familiar with those places where you're driving around, you dip into a valley or go behind a hill and you lose signal for just a short period of space and then you pick it up again once you get out of that, that terrain blockage. Here in the Northwest, that's a significant issue for us and small cells can be a great targeted solution for those places. In more urban areas, you've got tall buildings that can block signal and create areas of poor signal in between skyscrapers. So, you know, downtown Seattle deployments are targeted at that kind of issue. And then we have large-track residential areas. So, one important change in how we use our devices is that people used to use their, their phones when they're away from home. More and more now, people are using their phones as their primary device, not just primary communication device, but primary device for all sorts of things. And so, that need is now moving to residential neighborhoods where it's not necessarily appropriate to cite large macrosites.
Well, and typically, in the large residential areas, the industry has had difficulties citing any kind of macro facilities. Most codes have a significant setback from residential uses for towers. So, these are areas that have not been, been typically served by the tower network as, as robustly as more commercial areas have been.
So, I believe your packet includes some narrative that we provided to Ogden Murphy Wallace with regard to our site selection process. In general, what happens is our radio frequency engineers and system performance technicians identify places where we either have current needs for additional capacity in the network or we're projecting growth that is going to create a need in the network. They issue a project and then that's when it comes to my team. And Jenny's here. She's our site acquisition consultant for small cells for Issaquah. We'll assign it to a site acquisition consultant and get people out on the ground looking at the solutions that work, evaluating whether the solution that RF has proposed, be it a macro site, a small cell, or, or any number of solutions, is appropriate for that particular, you know, municipality, location, terrain. They work together very closely to come up with a project proposal that is appropriate. And with small cells, that can be complicated because each of these has a very limited range and so they have to work together. And then, and then from there, we move into leasing, you know, and jurisdiction approval for the sites. So, I'm not going to go into exhaustive detail about that. Your, your packet does include some real detail on that and I'm happy to field any specific questions you have about it.
Can I ask questions?
Absolutely.
So, I think, in having read the material, one of the questions for me was, I'm not really sure what gap you're trying to fill. So, the, the presentation material talks about it as if it's sort of a citywide issue. But the gap that you're trying to fill with the proposal we're looking at tonight seems more of a mobility issue than an actual citywide solution. So, the, the thing we're talking about now doesn't talk about putting it on buildings or putting it in neighborhoods. It talks about putting it on arterial roads. So, is the gap that we're trying to fill here fall more into the mobility issue than the home user issue?
This first project is intended to fill a gap along a high-traffic roadway. But this is the first of what we expect to be several projects that we would propose in the city of Issaquah.
And they're not necessarily related to residential users or homeowners that are near. The gap you're trying to fill is for commuters who are on that road.
For this particular project?
Yeah.
Yes. But for future projects, there, we do have future projects that would be coming your way that would be targeted more at residential neighborhood deployments. So, this slide just illustrates our macro site network and our small cell network and I like to speak to how they work together. So, our macro sites are going to continue to provide the backbone of our coverage. So, your general, you know, just signal to make calls, the, the miles of coverage from a macro site, that's not going to change. So, what small cells do is it's generally about a two-foot-tall antenna with an associated radio mounted on a utility pole or a light standard. And, and it does not put off a strong enough signal to interfere with our adjacent macrosites. So, what that allows us to do is get more density and capacity in the network. This next slide is a diagram of what one of these looks like. So, this is it from one of our deployments in the Green Lake neighborhood of Seattle. At the top, you see antennas, are those two-foot panel antennas. Then you've got some conduit standing off the pole that carries our fiber and power cables. That, the reason why it's in conduit standing off the pole is because National Electric Safety Code requires that the pole remain climbable. So, so we put that off. Then we've got radios and a power disconnect located lower on the pole. So, there is no ground equipment for these deployments. And, and each of these has a range of between 400 and 1,000 feet depending on the equipment spec. So, for these more, you know, residential neighborhood or, or, you know, along roadway deployments, we would generally go with a 40-watt radio, which would be a little bit larger than what you see in this picture here, but is represented in the photo simulations for the project that we're proposing. And we've got some more pictures for you. This is one of our most recent installations. It was turned up in November in Ballard, in Old Ballard along Ballard Avenue. So, you know, just wanted to show you how this kind of blends with the cityscape, especially where you've got, you know, a significant amount of tree cover. You can, yep.
So, this is kind of, this is with a question I was wondering about the gap. So, for example, in the slide you have now, the Ballard slide, is that, is that a gain for mobility or is that a gap in your system for the people in Ballard neighborhood, residential, business, commercial? Is it a gap in their system or a gap in the mobility decisions?
This, this one is particularly a need because of the Sunday market and the high amount of traffic that they have along this area. The nodes are literally placed on the street that closes for the Ballard Sunday Market. Also, Ballard has all sorts of festivals and events and, and I happen to live in that neighborhood and I can tell you, on an average Tuesday in a coffee shop down there, I'd have capacity issues. And now with these three small cell nodes, I don't anymore. This next one is a residential neighborhood deployment and that just is, should be on air today, if not today, tomorrow. It's coming on air this week. We're excited about this one because it's our first PSE utility pole deployment. It's also our first deployment in the city of Bellevue and, and our first deployment of any size outside the city of Seattle. So, it's 15 nodes in North Bellevue. Happy to provide you with more information on the location. As a matter of fact, Alana may have already forwarded that onto you so you can go take a look at them for yourself. Very similar design to both what we were installing in Seattle and what we would be proposing for Issaquah. And this one is because of, of a change in usage and residential neighborhoods needing more capacity. So, here's, here's another one in Green Lake. And then I wanted to show you a few of the light standards we're developing with Puget Sound Energy. So, these are some photo simulations of light standards that we're about to be deploying. So, this one's in Kirkland. We hope to be deploying this one in the first half of next year, six nodes along Market Street. And this one is proposed for Bellevue, for the Newport Hills area near Newcastle. We've got a similar project that would be going into Newcastle. So, this is an example where PSE is actually changing out light standards in a neighborhood to a new design standard. And so, we were able to work with PSE to come up with a small cell version of the same pole design that's very similar. And then here's some photo simulations. We've got the full photo simulation package for the first project here. If you don't already have it in your packet, we're happy to distribute it. I just threw a couple of pictures and you've got before and after pictures of these three. So, you can kind of get a feel for what, what we're actually proposing there. And that's, that's all we had to present, so.
So, as part of the packet, we provided an alternative franchise agreement to the first one that was in the agenda bill, which the first one was for a citywide franchise agreement. And based on some comments that were made at the last meeting, we went ahead and negotiated another franchise agreement that limited the area of the franchise to only the area of this first deployment, specifically along the area of Issaquah Pine Lake Road and Issaquah Falls City Road within the city of Issaquah limits. And so, what I'm going to do is, and I apologize because the legislative version of the franchise didn't get put in the packet and apparently the Exhibit A, which shows the franchise area, didn't get put in the packet. So, I do have that, that I will put on the screen here for you momentarily. It's not showing up in legislative. I don't see the, I don't see the red lines. Okay. Okay, let me see. Let me try a different document. Apologize. It says red line. It should be showing everything. Is that it? I got to save it out of read-only? Okay. We will try that. Apologize for the technical difficulties of me here. Let's see. Save as. We will just save it back to there and we'll just change the name of it. All right. Why isn't it showing the red lines? Okay, so I'm going to have to go through this in a little different way to show it. So, the first red line was right here where it used to say 2017. It just says 2-0 now and the, we'll fill in the 1-8. Sorry, I'm going to have to go through it. There's not a lot of red lines in here. If you go to Section B, limited authorization. This was the change. Previously, it said citywide, but now it says public ways within and immediately adjacent to the area depicted in Exhibit A. And then as it continues, I believe that was a location facilities in Section 4. And I apologize for having to do it this way. I thought I had the other dealt with. In the location of facilities for A, there was some language that was added following the words franchise area. Right here, it says, even if the pole locations shown in Exhibit A are modified or increased, provided that the pole locations do not extend beyond the general area described in Exhibit A. The intent behind that was while Exhibit A identifies very specific poles, it was the idea that, well, that pole may not be the right one. It may be a pole that's just like adjacent to it or something like that, or shift maybe just a little bit, you know, on city right-of-way, maybe, you know, 50 feet or so outside the area that circled on the map in Exhibit A. I believe these were the only changes in the text of the franchise that was previously reviewed. That was for citywide, yes.
Mr. Chair question? So, the one that I'm looking at in the packet, this is different because I'm just tracking with you and so the public hasn't seen this version before.
This one was put in the packet on the 19th of this month. It came in late.
I just pulled the packet up right now. It's not in there.
Okay, because it's online. I pulled it from online.
I pulled it from online and it's not, it's not that version.
Okay, it's not in Civic Web. That's odd.
The one I'm looking at has Section 4 and it doesn't have that new, doesn't have Exhibit A in it.
Right. That's the apology that I made earlier is Exhibit A was inadvertently left off of it. And I'm going to show you Exhibit A momentarily. I just wanted to show you the red line version because what's in the packet or what was put in the Civic Web attached to this agenda item was this franchise. But Exhibit A was not provided inadvertently.
But this is new wording that he's showing us here compared to the old one.
I was going to say Exhibit A is in the packet?
No, it's not.
I.
Exhibit A is not. It got dropped. But the wording he's talking about here are changes that were made from the last version.
Okay, so when I pulled it up today, Exhibit A was there. I could see exactly the pole numbers that they're talking about and the language that goes with it is not the language that's up here.
Okay.
Not sure why.
Wow, okay. Because I'm not sure what's, I'm not sure what's going on there because I, so let's, okay, so let's go back to this. This, so this is the one right here that you said you pulled up?
Mm-hmm. Oh, I apologize, Sheldon. I believe I'm in the AB now and earlier today.
Yeah, AB Exhibit A, you're correct. That's the old one. That's for, that's for citywide. The one I was just looking at explaining what the changes were in the text.
Is the last attempt.
Is the view area-specific agreement posted. And that's the one that refers to an Exhibit A to that, to the franchise. And it's that Exhibit A that was inadvertently not posted. And I'm going to pull that up here to show you what Exhibit A to the area-specific agreement Let's see if I can rotate this. Thank you.
And this one appears to show both the Issaquah and Semamish nodes of the project and we have developed a version that's Issaquah only.
Right. So, what this map shows is it shows all the nodes that Verizon wants to do in their initial deployment. You'll notice that down here and, and you'll see outlined in blue was the proposed franchise area, but those areas of deployment, a number of them were actually inside city of Semamish. And so, we had, as part of Exhibit A, we had a note added to the bottom that says, Note 7, nodes 7 through 17 are outside of Issaquah city limits or are not subject to the franchise agreement because they are inside another jurisdictions right-of-way. So, essentially, what this franchise agreement covers is Node 18 and then 1 through 6. So, Issaquah Falls City Road through here from, from just, you know, it looks like it's down here towards the Fred Meyer area, up the hill to where it splits to Issaquah Pine Lake Road and goes that way to the north. And so, Node 18 is just north of the intersection of Issaquah Falls City and Pine Lake Road. And just for reference purposes, Highlands Drive comes in right here, like this. So, all the other nodes are inside city of Semamish, but it's Nodes 1 through 6 and 18 which are included in this franchise.
So, Sheldon, did city of Semamish have a signed franchise agreement right now?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Not at this time. We, we're meeting with the city of Semamish. We're working with them on, on paths forward for small cells there, but at this point, we have not gotten as far of a franchise agreement.
And so, does the project go forward if city of, city of Issaquah has an agreement and city of Semamish does not? Does the project go forward?
Yes. Nodes 1 through 6 and 18 would move forward and the rest would be deployed in the second phase.
So, if, open the questions, discussion from the committee?
One technical question that deals with the language of it and several policy questions. So, I think it's the top of page 4. There's a talk about undergrounding. If we could pull that up. Yeah.
The very top.
And Section 5, relocation.
Yeah, maybe that's what it is. I guess my question, Sheldon, is that we currently have a policy that talks about undergrounding power and, and getting rid of power poles when we do projects in town. And I didn't understand how that tied into this, if this technology requires poles. Like, how does, how do those two pieces fit together?
The franchise would require them to either relocate outside of the right-of-way if the power poles get undergrounded and they're not able to do that, or have another arrangement with the city for either installing another pole or something like that within the right-of-way. But that would be subject to future permitting from the city. But the expectation is, is that when the power lines and power poles go away, that they have to relocate their facility outside the right-of-way, eliminate it, or go underground somehow.
Okay, so the, so this to me seems like a forward-thinking, new type of utility that we're talking about, first time that we're going to talk about it. If we have a policy for aesthetic reasons that we're going to, PSE says they don't care if they go underground or stay above ground. That's not their policy. It's actually ours. We're the ones who say it has to go underground. So, if the whole thing with the city of Issaquah policy is that it's an aesthetic thing to get rid of poles, tell me the rationale for why you then give a use to a new utility to put poles in place when we actually have a policy to remove poles and go underground?
I don't think this automatically provides that authorization to put a new pole in. This franchise does not allow new poles at this time.
Okay. Okay. And then I think the second technical one had to do with, I can't remember what part it was at, but it was talking about ground units, ground equipment allowed up to 17 square feet. It called it primary end utility. And none of the pictures we've seen have showed us what that is. So, I'm curious about, is there ground equipment involved here? What does it look like? And 17 square feet, like that's, that's a, sounds like a significant thing.
So, we do not have ground equipment. The 17 cubic feet comes from the state definition of what a small cell is. So, it's just the general definition of a small cell. Each antenna, no more than 3 cubic feet and total volume of antennas and equipment, no more than 17 cubic feet. I'm not sure of the actual measurements of these installations. They're far below the 17 cubic feet. 17 cubic feet is, you know, it's fairly sizable and we try to keep our design as slim as we can.
So, why does the agreement have to have the 17 square feet in it? Because to me, approving an agreement where it says somewhere in the right-of-way you can locate something like that, if you don't want it, locate something like that in this pilot project in town, why have that in the agreement?
The agreement, the 17 cubic feet, actually, can we find that, where that's located in the agreement?
Yeah.
Because I believe that what the agreement reflects is the state definition, that you can have up to, there's 17 cubic feet of antennas and equipment and still be classified as a small cell, as part of the state definition of what a small cell is.
as a small cell, as part of the state definition of what a small cell is. So I'd like to be able to address your specific question.
I'm looking for it.
And then as far as why the state definition, consistency for what a small cell is, but also because, you know, the initial agreement was citywide, as I alluded to before, we do have future projects that we're hoping to bring in. Our preference would be to have the agreement be structured in such a way that those amendments really deal with, you know, the additional project detail, rather than the foundational language of the agreement.
So is there a corresponding aesthetic piece in here that deals with the fact that we could have a 17-cubic-foot installation right in the right-of-way, right in a neighborhood, or right in a business district? Is there something that deals with a concern that might be, well, that's a pretty big thing, just to plop down in a neighborhood or in a business district?
Sure. And what we've included in the agreement are some design typicals that are the photographs that you've seen, the photo simulations that you've seen. And if we depart significantly, if we were to propose a design that was significantly different from what you're seeing in those photographs, we would be required to come back.
Do you have an example of a ground facility, so we could see what it looks like?
We don't use them. We haven't employed any sort of ground-mounted equipment. Sometimes, in some other locations, not in the Puget Sound Energy area, the utility will require us to have a pedestal to put a meter in, because they won't give us a flat rate on power like Puget Sound Energy does. So there would be a cabinet on the ground that would be ground equipment. Fortunately, in working with Puget Sound Energy, they offer us a flat rate on power, and we don't have to put anything that touches the ground in the right-of-way.
So even though it's a state definition, is there a big heartburn for you if we don't allow it?
There... It would depend on the details of the language, because right now, this is fairly new technology. And we're expecting a lot of evolution in this technology. So things that limit flexibility for future deployments can be a concern. So, and unfortunately, some of our newer tech that looks a little bit better for... Right now, it doesn't have as good a range and quality, but we're hoping that that improves. Some of those, you know, they're... Well, just bottom line is, flexibility's good this early in the game in terms of equipment designs.
And this is just a recitation of the state definition, which we're finding in the number of communities that we're dealing with in terms of franchises and codes, this has been pretty standard in the agreements that Ogden Murphy has been negotiating with Verizon.
And have any other jurisdictions come up with aesthetic codes? Because I think the pictures you showed us of what shows up on the pole didn't raise any alarm bells. But stuff that can show up on the ground that is that size, have any other jurisdictions put in any aesthetic controls?
Go ahead. I was actually just going to touch on, so when you look at the definition here, that includes things that are basically not the antenna. So the boxes that are on there go into that calculation. So depending on the technology, and I would defer to Verizon on that, that would be split up almost necessarily to different things on the pole and on the ground. So that whole allotment wouldn't necessarily, or almost certainly wouldn't just be on the ground. So when you think about the size, it would be smaller in that case, and things like the power. I have personally not seen too much regulation off of this definition at all, because it's what the state has prescribed as what a small cell is. So we're trying to have a standardized definition for future franchisees as well, because technology does change between the carriers. So we don't want to lock it down too tight on a franchise early on that doesn't have ground-mounted equipment and doesn't need power monitoring and gauges and those types of things. So I would say this is pretty standard in terms of what that is. If they don't use it, and they don't expect to, that's one thing. But knowing that as far in advance of a citywide rollout could be challenging for Verizon.
So my question was a little bit different. It's about, it doesn't matter whether or not they use it, have any cities required aesthetic, something to deal with aesthetics in it, so that when it comes, it's not a big surprise? Maybe it's 10 years, maybe it's 20 years, but there's not some big box that fills all of a sudden a corner in the middle of a neighborhood?
Aesthetic requirements in the franchise?
Yeah. Have you seen it with any other cities where they said if there's ground-mounted equipment, we have certain expectations about aesthetics?
I don't think I've seen that in a franchise, certainly codes, like Alana provided, some sample codes that have some aesthetic requirements in there. I know that generally speaking, and I'm trying to remember the cities, the carriers try to work with the cities, and they have tried to hide ground-mounted equipment inside of other, you know, devices. I know that there are build-outs with small cells, I think, inside of like, things like trashcans. And obviously, depending on the type of pole, all of these are on wood poles. So if it's not a wood pole, it's a hollow pole, a lot of that can get put inside the pole. So we're talking about a limited circumstance where they wouldn't work with the city to artistically camouflage it, or camouflage it with different colors, and they don't have a pole that they can put it inside of. So in terms of putting it in the franchise, less and more in the actual code.
Councilmember, could I speak to your earlier question about undergrounding for just a moment? Because in the event that the undergrounding provisions are triggered and the neighborhood decides to underground, we would then seek to have an agreement with the city to go on light standards, like we showed you, the camouflage light standards for that area, because generally, those do remain in undergrounded neighborhoods. So that would be the solution we would follow up on with the city.
That's really, that's very helpful. Thank you for that answer. It's not the neighborhoods. It's city policy that says that the power will go underlying. So it's not an aesthetic choice by the neighborhood. It's actually been a policy decision by our city to go underground.
Exactly. So that would be the solution we would seek.
Okay.
Are there any questions?
I have more, but you guys should...
Sheldon, did you have any luck?
I'm going to defer to Daniel.
Okay.
This is the...
Okay, so I appreciate your presentation. The additional information is very helpful. And I can see the technology, I can see the investment, I can see what you're trying to do. I understand at a certain level what you're trying to do here. However, the issue I have is that recently FCC did away with net neutrality. And I think, I'd like, this is a good opportunity for us here, if to use the public right-of-way, this request to use the public right-of-way, that we find a way in the language in our agreement, that none of the usage of the public right-of-way is going to be governed by anything than a free and open internet.
So just general response to that. So this is, as you know, a very new issue. Things have changed in the last 10 days. So the one thing that popped out to me, and we have not taken a deep dive into net neutrality as it would apply to this, however, the FCC chairman did specifically note in that order that preemption is going to stand in the way of local jurisdictions taking action. There are multiple, I mean, many states right now, and state legislatures that are trying to take action to continue the net neutrality as it was before. Those are all going to be legal challenges, and it is to be determined on how that's going to work out. So in terms of trying to take action right now, having not spent a lot of time with it, given the timeline that we're working on since the FCC made their decision, it would be a challenge and risk to try to take that here. We would need authority that wouldn't be preempted by the federal government.
Explain that last part. We would need authority that wouldn't be preempted. So it would have to be granted, how?
Well, so the federal government gave the FCC the authority to regulate the internet. And so, for broadband internet services. So if we try, if the city or the state tries to do something that contradicts what they have done at the FCC, the FCC would argue, and there's a lot of people that would disagree with this, and that's why there's lawsuits, is that the federal, the FCC rulings would preempt those local decisions. In addition to that, there's interstate commerce. So we can't do something here that is going to get in the way of what they've done in DC. Lots of people are going to challenge that, to try to determine what can be done by the states and by local jurisdictions. So I won't say that it can't be done. I will say that it's very early on, and to try to do that here right now would be a huge challenge. But your concern is widely held, and is being brought to the courts almost every day.
So you don't see... Thank you. I think I understand, but I just got to ask really clearly. So you don't... You couldn't come up with any, you don't want to come up with any language that we could stick in here?
At this time, I think it's premature, and I don't think that we have a legal basis to put those requirements in here at this time. I think that that is going to get clearly defined.
And you don't think we have the legal basis because of the FCC's has jurisdiction? Or the federal rules have jurisdiction?
Basically.
All right, thank you for that answer.
Anything else before we go to public comment?
So a couple of higher-level policy questions. Does Semamish have the same policy that we have that, with new road projects, that they require the undergrounding of power? Because they have approved design funds for the road section that is 18 through 12, shown on there. They, in their budget this year, they're going ahead with preliminary design. So do they have the same policy that we do that, when you're, or sorry, 16 through 12? Do they have the same policy that we do, that when they're doing roadwork, they require the undergrounding of power? Or is that just the city of Issaquah addition that we have?
I believe they do underground the power as they do their road projects.
Okay. And if I understand the agreement correctly, when that undergrounding happens, if this utility decides that what they want to do is still have access to the right-of-way, they will have to combine with a streetlight project or something else that we're doing versus putting in their own poles? This does not allow them to add poles to the right-of-way. They have to come back to the city and talk about how they would still maintain their service?
This franchise agreement does not allow them to build their own poles in the right-of-way. So the alternative would be to try and figure out how to go on existing light standards.
Okay. That's it, though.
Okay. Does that cover all our questions? All right. We'll now open for public comment. Does anyone... Stand nearby. They may have questions for you as well.
We're here till the end.
Yes. Any public comments, questions? Is this you, Connie? Might as well. Don't want to leave with no comments.
So, given the net neutrality situation, I would just wait until we know what's going to happen, before you give them any authority. And while they might not like that, I think it's responsible not to put something into place that then could create an unknown circumstance, right? And right now, it's all up in the air. That's it.
Thank you, Connie. David?
I'd second Paul's concern and Connie's comments about net neutrality. Also concerned about, there are poles. What are we going to do? Are we going to give any credence to people's views? Maybe there's a pole near their house or whatever, and suddenly, they're going to have a bunch of stuff right there in their view. I think there needs to be some looking at those issues, too. This really could impact somebody's property value, I think. And we are already getting so much junk hung on our poles down here especially, that this is just one more thing that happens and makes it harder to ever get undergrounding, even though this can't be underground. It's just going to be a lot harder. It's going to have to be relocated and all that. It just makes it harder. Or if somebody is developing some property and has to take underground their frontage, they would then have multiple utilities that they would have to pay to have underground. So it could be a huge economic burden on somebody trying to develop a piece of property that now has overhead wires.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Seeing no one else. So at this point, you both have covered all the questions I have, I think. So there, at this point, we want to discuss some of the things. I'll kind of, maybe Sheldon, help me reiterate some of the situation we were in from last time, when there are some legal requirements you can touch on, and when agreements are requested in our response time and so forth. So maybe we want to go over that again very quickly, on what we have to do.
Essentially, it's 120 days to approve or deny. And so, we're at that point now to make that decision. And, well, yeah. So, I mean, that is the decision to make, and that would go to full council to make that decision, and depending on how you all feel.
Okay. So, and generally, denial of these types of agreements, you have to have some, it's not just, we don't want them. You have to have some pretty strong reasons, not just opinions, right?
Correct. If there's a denial, that could open up a claim to basically effective prohibition from Verizon. So would certainly want to be prepared for what that would mean going forward.
So by law, we have to allow people to put the things in the right-of-way, the utilities that we need to live, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. In some way or another. We have control over that now. And reiterate, our conversation from last month was, this was a citywide issue, right? And our conversation basically narrowed it down to one strip of road there, because we said it's the first time we're doing one of these small cell permits. And we're concerned with going too big, too fast, without understanding the whole thing. That's why you're here, to give us some more detail. And so, at this point, this agreement, the difference would be, it'd be just that one strip of road there, and on existing poles, and it wouldn't extend any further. And if there were more areas requested at a later date, that would come as a different project, a different request to be somewhere else in the city as needed.
Yeah. It would actually require council action to revise the franchise agreement.
So any addition to this would have to go through council?
Right. Anything outside the area shown there for numbers 1 through 6 and 18 would require another, would require a franchise amendment.
Okay. So we've done a lot of work on this, narrowing it down pretty specifically. So the question is, how is that, how do you feel with that now that we've basically done that work since last month?
So I'm going to take it a step down, because I know Paul's going to talk to the net neutrality. I'm going to take it one level down from that. I really appreciate narrowing the project down. I think that was great and much more appropriate for what we're looking at. I also thank Verizon and Sheldon and our legal team, because I think you heard us last time, and there's a lot of responsiveness in what you've just brought back. The two remaining concerns for me are aesthetics. So I don't, there was some examples shown of what the aesthetics would look like. I actually want that part of the agreement. So you can tell us, Sheldon, if that's possible or not, but if this is what it's going to look like, attach it to the agreement. Make it part of the agreement, so that we know what we're getting and there's certainty. I actually do agree pretty much with Mr. Kapler's statement, that this can have issues. I actually didn't have a strong feeling about the visuals that we saw, but I think, why can't we just attach that?
We can attach it. What it does is, it limits opportunity. If something better comes up, you're kind of stuck with what you have. And so, it does limit what staff can approve or not approve by putting something like this in the agreement. And if something better is available, it would cause the staff to come back to modify the franchise agreement.
Better is a tough word, because better for me means... Better is a tough word, because better for me means less impactful. And so I, as harsh as it sounds, I don't really have such a hard time tying your hands a little bit.
Okay, that's fine.
Because it provides the community an enormous amount of certainty. And I'm going to say flexibility, certainty. This is what they're building, let's just attach it. The second one is, it's a bigger one. I do have a concern with the ground equipment language here. I understand that it's a total capacity for what might be on a pole, might be on the ground, and I understand that the ground is, pieces are not a part of this proposal, and that the flexibility to have ground pieces in the future makes sense, but no aesthetic control? That's a really big concern for me. I think that the practice has been, over the last 20 years, to take things underground, to take utilities underground, and saying that we're just going to allow, you know, take off a few square feet up for what's on the pole, but we could allow something that large on the ground in our urban areas? That causes me concern without some sort of aesthetic control. So there's two ways to go, and you can tell me what you like. We actually modify that piece of the agreement to say that the aesthetics have to do blah, 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 or we take it out, one or the other. But just giving free rein to say, somebody can put something that large in the right-of-way, I'm not very comfortable with that. I'm kind of very uncomfortable with that. And then the last one is cost to developers. So for property owners or developers, when they come and redo a property, the city does not get involved in the negotiations between them and the utilities. They have to work out their own deal. They have to go to each utility separately. And it's quite burdensome right now to go to Comcast, to go to PSC, and work out a deal when you're redeveloping your property. What additional burden does this add? Would it be that a property owner might have to actually install the power poles to allow these cells to continue, or the light poles to allow this utility to continue, once we agree it's allowed in the right-of-way? Because they're already burdened significantly in dealing with PSC and Comcast and others. So what impact does this have on private property owners and developers?
There's two questions there.
There's lots of questions.
Yeah, there's lots of things embedded in there. So I'm going to attempt to attack the definition first. The cubic foot that's allowed within the right-of-way by state definition. I think leaving the definition in there is good. I think we might be able to negotiate something with Verizon to modify the language that may limit the size, you know, of the ground facilities. That would maybe be needed. I've heard Verizon say tonight, they don't use ground facilities. And so it looks like Leila is going to talk here.
Can I just put a little fine tune on it? Would you be willing to put all of your ground facilities underground, in an underground vault versus a surface vault?
So to take the last question first, vaulting is not actually feasible for the radio equipment because of our weather here. But to the question of attaching the photo simulations for the specific project to the agreement, that's something we have done elsewhere. We understand that for future projects, we're going to have to come back and amend the franchise. And for this project, we're fairly certain that this design, that these sims are very good, and that's how the project's going to look. So we'd be open to that. We'd have more concerns, I think, about modifying the accepted state definition of small cell in the agreement. And with regard to redevelopment, you're concerned about the cost to private property owners. In our agreement with Puget Sound Energy, they have discretionary rights to terminate our agreement at any point in time. And if they no longer need the pole, or if that pole's going away for any reason, or if they have a need for the pole, like say, to put a transformer where our equipment is, then we relocate at our cost. So at that point, it would not be additional cost to the developer. It'd be additional cost for Verizon to remove and redesign and redeploy our equipment.
And there would be no obligation on any homeowner to install a pole to allow continuity of service by Verizon?
So you're not considered, once you're in the right-of-way, you're not considered an essential service, or something where the homeowner would then have to provide you with that, or the developer would have to provide you with?
No. We're not regulated by the UTC.
Also, to speak to aesthetics in front of people's homes. Now, this project, as we've already stated, is along the highway. It's not directly impacting people's homes. But for your peace of mind for future projects, siting in ways that do not block people's views and that are, you know, work well with the community environment is very important to Verizon. And we make every effort to select poles that are between property lines and not in front of picture windows, and to take that into account. So I appreciate your concern, and I want you to know that that's also a concern we share.
That's great, thanks. So while you're up there, can you talk about the ground equipment and the current language, and whether or not you would be amenable to adding some, either adding some sort of language that talks about aesthetic control? Because I think one of my bigger concerns is actually the potential future unintended consequence of ground equipment that just does not fit with what we're looking for in our urban environment.
What we've done before?
For this particular, because this is so location-specific, this particular agreement, and we would have to come back and amend in the event that we were to need ground equipment, I think that if we added language saying that we would not deploy ground equipment for this polygon?
Yeah, that should be fine.
What do you think?
I think that's workable. At this point, the projects that I've got under my control, where we have ground equipment deployment, are at the jurisdiction or utility owner's request. Or, you know, there are projects nationally that are not in our control, not in this region, that are, where it's battery backup, where it's redundancy in the site. And we're not planning to deploy that. So that...
Thank you very, very much.
If I could interrupt for a moment? So a couple of things, just for education, so to speak. So when a developer comes in and does their frontage improvements, yes, they are required to do undergrounding and the like, as well as half-street improvements, but they're also required to put in street illumination. So that's a baseline requirement. It wouldn't be just so that wireless facilities could be put on the light standards, because street lighting is part of their frontage improvement requirements, as well as other elements. So I just wanted to clarify that, because we don't require them just so that the utilities can go put on the wireless.
So I guess I'm thinking of smaller developments where the streetlight system is already in, and the requirements of PSC. The city's requirement to underground is a really big burden on smaller developments, and PSC asking to actually put their utilities on private property, I think, is awful to small developers. And Comcast has been known to ask small developers to actually upgrade the entire line along the street. And all I want to do is make sure that when we have these small parcel developments, which is not the big one, like you're talking about, you know, where there's going to be streetlights involved, when there's not streetlights involved and poles are going away, that burden is getting put on that small developer, and that's not appropriate. I just want to make sure we're not adding to that current burden that we already have.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thanks.
I don't know that I have much latitude here. I think I just heard a legal opinion that basically said that we don't have jurisdiction.
That's the argument. This is brand-new, so I don't have a conclusive legal authority for that. But the FCC has stated their opinion, lawsuits are being filed by states to counter that opinion, and I do not have a clear sense on how a local jurisdiction, such as the city, would make out if they added that in there.
Okay, thank you. The adjustments made since last month, I'll echo what Mary Lou said as well, is I do appreciate it, making it very location-specific and providing the additional information. I would say one comment about the aesthetics, or the putting the pictures of the poles, that the language could be in such a way. I think typically what we see trends in electronics is miniaturization, not getting larger. And assuming the same kind of functionality, I mean, I would hope, maybe if we could do it in such a way where there could be some administrative discretion, any type of upgrade is actually, if it actually is larger or more intrusive, as opposed to something that be more minimal, then that should be okay. I mean, I just, I think if it goes smaller, why would we have to come back? That tends to be the trend. But as far as the net neutrality, I think this is a really big issue, and this isn't, this is the front line, almost. I mean, you've got to get all the way to people's houses, actually. I'm not going to drop it in the future. I think we need to follow what's happening here closely. And the fact that this is, there's, by my count, maybe seven poles, all of Isiqua, right now. I like to, I'm going to watch what happens through the courts, what happens with this case, and try to ride with whatever happens there. Because I think it's, I feel strongly that you're going to use our public right-of-way, you're going to use our public right-of-way for your commercial enterprise for-profit business, which I get. The idea that a public utility for the good, which has been declared a public utility, that certain customers can take, get advantage, to the disadvantage of other common people, and people with less resources, I think is just a, shouldn't happen. And so I don't, I accept that we have nothing, very little leverage that we can do right now, but I'm glad that this is very localized. So if anything's going to go beyond these six or seven poles, we'll be able to address it, and hopefully things will progress soon. Bye then. Thank you.
Just, Mr. Chair, what I would like to see, because it seems like Verizon is amenable to it, I'm in favor of moving this forward and moving it forward to council, but I would, I do think attaching the visuals, requesting that, would be great. And also the fact that Verizon says they're not deploying ground equipment in this particular version of the agreement, they're not opposed to that, I'd like to see that there as well. And then I think I'd have a higher degree of comfort about the aesthetics, and I realize it's a new and emerging technology, we'll have lots of conversations about it, we're not going citywide. So I would be in favor of moving it forward as long as those two pieces were added.
Okay. So let me reiterate what we've got at this point. We made the changes from last month. We now have a very site-specific of approximately seven poles. It's the equipment that is going to go in these is basically known now, because this is immediate action, so that what it's going to look like and what it's going to be is, there's not much, you know, unknown there. So that's been more specified at this point. We're also on a timeline that we need to approve or deny these, and I don't know that we have reason to go on the denial phase at this point. So, but the things we wanted to add, as Mary Lou just stated, I think concern for visuals or aesthetics is something. In this area, it's the first piece, and we're, you know, pretty much okay with what's going on there, but from then on, it'll definitely become something. If you take out the piece on ground equipment, again, for this stretch, you'd be okay with that. And Paul's comment for net neutrality is something I think everybody's going to support to some extent here, but at this point in time, I don't think we can add anything to it, jumping in that soup, if you will, right now, I don't think is going to help the city at all. But I think we need to keep it on our forefront of our, you know, our consciousness as we go forward with the next ones. One of the other things...
Can I just echo one thing there? I just recall all citizens to add your voice to, we need to speak up for what's right for all citizens, and net neutrality is one of those. Thank you.
All right. Okay, and, oh, and the other thing that we did talk about last time, and the other word is that this is the first of probably more requests for projects to come. There'll be additional ones from Verizon, I believe, as well as from other companies. So this is kind of our pilot one that we're working on. It's limited, and hopefully we'll get a better handle on this, and we'll have, you know, what we need to do a modification next time around, or whatever, to make that work a little better. So with all that stated, is everybody okay with all that?
Yeah.
And as proposed, so we'll go send it to council on a 3-0 vote, and...
I'm looking to see when, what meeting that's...
Yeah, and I was just looking at it, too, because here's January 2nd, because we're on the, what's that?
I was going to suggest, to modify the franchise and everything, the January 2nd agenda bill is due today, so...
Right, we won't do it.
It's not going to happen. It's going to be the second meeting in January.
The 16th?
The 16th. And I just want to confirm the changes. I think my notes are essentially the same as what you guys have, and I want to confirm. Changes to the franchise itself for moving it forward is that we have to add language to not allow ground equipment as part of this first deployment. And we need to attach visual examples of what is going to be built as part of this first deployment, as a condition of the franchise.
And I'm going to say specifically what was provided to us today.
The examples are...
Those examples.
Yeah, those photo simulations, we will attach those to the franchise as an exhibit.
And not the ones from Ballard or, but the ones to our specific poles, the photo...
The actual ones for the poles that are up there.
Interpretation ones.
Correct. And then I just wanted to give the committee a piece of information. I appreciate you mentioning that we are going to get other applications for franchises, and the answer to that is yes. We've already received franchise application from AT&amp;T, as well as mobility. And we're just in the process of now reviewing their applications for completeness and so forth, and there's going to be a lot of challenging discussions associated with their requests. The other thing is, is that the Development Services Department is preparing code for the aesthetics and regulatory environment associated with small cells. Their plan is to have draft code language by end of January, with an agenda bill to the city council sometime in February of next year. So hopefully, we'll be ahead of that 120-day clock for the AT&amp;T franchise and these other franchises. So that's kind of where we are right now, and what we have stacking up.
And just, I want to thank Verizon for being, you know, as the first one coming through here, for generously taking your time and working with us to get things that everybody's comfortable with for the first shot. Okay? So thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, just so there's no doubt, this is on regular business, and you're going to speak to it.
I was going to say, road down here, 3-0, regular business on the 16th, yes.
Thank you.
And I can speak on the 16th, not on the 2nd, so it works better as well. And you'll be, and, well, you won't be, you'll be sitting in a different chair. So yes, I will convey your thoughts as well. All right. Onto our next agenda item, which is solid waste collection services, informational presentation by Micah. You know, there he is, coming up.
Hello. Yeah, it's been a little while. I was, like I was going to say, I was slated to talk in October about the increase in rates, the annual CPI adjustment. The October meeting was canceled, so instead, I sent a memo forward, talking about the rate increase, but also talking about our current work we're doing on the possibility of going out to bid for a new contract. Just as a reminder, our current solid waste contract is with Recology Clean Scapes, and it goes through June of 2019. So timeline-wise, we need to decide at the beginning of this coming year whether we do an RFP process or not for a new contract. We currently have two-year extension options with Recology that we can exercise at our sole discretion. And in order to kind of gather information on making that decision about whether we go out to bid, or whether we do an extension, or whether we negotiate for a new contract, all of these are options. We're collecting data right now, and what that memo said is we were going to be doing a customer service satisfaction survey that would go out to all of our customers, not all of our customers, but we would contract for a survey for customer satisfaction. I have those results today that we're going to talk about. In addition, we did a rate comparison study with eight other neighboring cities to see how our rates kind of compare.
Sure. Sheldon, can you put that rate study up just for everybody's benefit? If you have the document open, what document do you have?
Just a little three-page handout would be great, if I can walk through that.
It's in the, yeah, View Report, it's right at the bottom of the screen there. Rate comparison.
The rate comparison?
Mm-hmm. It's in the other tab, it opened up in the other tab.
Let's go to the table. And I pulled out some of the info from the rate comparison to put on the kind of handout memo that I was going to walk through, so that might be easier to see.
Is there a table? There's no table in here?
They're at the end.
Okay.
Okay. I'm looking at maybe your summary here, it's with the yellow highlighting.
Yeah.
Right, so that's the attachment, that's not the rate study.
Oh, okay.
If you go back to the packet.
We'll go back, we'll open up the other.
No, yeah, there's one there.
It should just...
It should just be down on the packet, right? View report, maybe that one.
It's in the other tab.
Yeah.
No, there you go. There you go, that's it.
Yeah, so where is it? At the end?
Just, it's a few pages. There.
And I'll get to that part second, I wanted to talk about the satisfaction survey first. So, so I'm here to let you know, kind of, this is an informational presentation about these two data points. We're not ready to make a decision yet, recommendation to council on whether we should or shouldn't do an RFP process. We'll be coming back on February 5th to the council meeting to make that recommendation. There's a few other data points that we're gathering and working with other cities on, and we're also currently in discussions with Recology on options for an extension. Let's see. So I'll stop at the end of the customer satisfaction survey piece and ask questions, and then we can move on to kind of the rate comparison study. So there's a summary of information, if you want to scroll up, right there in the front, yeah. Scroll down just a little bit.
This is a different mouse.
Oh, it's on that screen, right. Want me to drag?
I got it.
Okay.
Is that what you're looking for?
Yep. Perfect. So we worked with Elway Research to conduct a customer satisfaction survey. They interviewed 543 randomly selected participants, 200 by phone, 343 online. We connected with both multifamily and single-family customers, that was a specific goal of ours to get feedback from multifamily as well as single-family. The survey has a pretty high level of confidence and a low margin of error. Some of the key findings were that satisfaction was really high across the board, which we found also before. Previously, we did a customer satisfaction survey after one year of service with Recology in 2013. Let's see. I think from the 2013 survey to the current survey, there was only one mark of satisfaction that went down, and that was on cleanliness of trucks, and it went down a very small amount, still very high customer satisfaction. Might be expected after six years of service that that might be the case. Across seven aspects of service, it did go up from 2013. The one that really went up was the customer service call center. So 22% of respondents had occasion to call Recology, and a majority of those who called rated them for a 10 for all four aspects of service on a scale of 0 to 10, 10 being completely satisfied. So that's pretty high customer satisfaction. We were also surprised to find that 49% of residents had been to the Recology store, which was kind of a, a new concept in this contract, and since the store has been open, there have been at least five other cities that have put them in their solid waste contracts. So it was a concept that's kind of spread throughout the county, which is fun to see. I think it's been helpful from our standpoint as well in getting the word out, and a lot of people like to go there to pay their bills and change their service levels and talk about different things with the customer service representatives. We also took the opportunity to ask some questions of residents about other environmental practices that they have. 67% of residents surveyed say they are reducing food waste, and 63% say they're trying to reuse and repair items rather than buy new items. 45% are using alternative transportation, and 37% are using natural yard care practices. We also asked specifically for the potential solarized campaign next year, interest in community solar, and 68% of residents showed an interest in community solar or getting community discounts on solar panels. And then 64% of residents were interested in a tool library of some sort. So these are all kind of ancillary to the contract customer satisfaction, but Stuart Elway had this statement in the summary, which I thought was pretty cool, that the city has a different problem than other cities. From having to convince people more of the desirability and necessity to do more to conserve resources, but most Isiqua residents appear to have crossed that threshold, the challenge for the city is to meet this willingness to engage and to provide residents with the capability and tools to do more of what they already want to do. So, but that was a pretty good sign and a positive quote from the survey statistician. So turning now to the rate comparison, any other questions on the survey, by the way? Turning now to the rate comparison sheet, the second page. We contracted with Sound Resources Management Group to provide a rate comparison against eight other cities. We tried to find cities that had a different mix of haulers, they had a similar population to ours, and regionally were close to us. Had several interesting results, and kind of before I started on this, there's a really big caveat to all of this information, which is that the rates are based on a completely different mix of services for some cities. There's extra collection options, a mix of residential and commercial account numbers for each of the different cities, so the rates can represent that. Geography is different in different cities, the distance to the transfer station, fuel costs, all of those things are built into the rates during the RFP process. So it's hard to compare apples to apples directly, but these do give you kind of a good comparison point for where we're at. So the first just looks at rates by sector, and that's broken out by residential, multifamily slash commercial, which are the same rates, and roll-off rates, which are large boxes, anything 10 to 40 yards, and compacted containers as well. And if you look at the single-family rates, which we have about 8,500 single-family customers in Isiqua, the average monthly bill based at Isiqua service levels, ours is the lowest out of the eight comparison cities, sum by a significant margin. Renton has a star by it, they provide every other wheat collection for their residential garbage services, so they don't have a comparable service level, so we couldn't do the comparison at their, at our service level. So that's their average bill for a single family at their service level. If you look at the average commercial and multifamily, which we have about 400 containers on the ground, Isiqua has the highest commercial, not significantly higher than Redmond, but higher than some of the other cities. And then roll-off customers, there's about 46 containers on the ground of different sizes, and again, Isiqua has the lowest rate for that service level. Any questions with that first chart?
Roll-off, just define roll-off for me really quick.
So roll-off is the larger containers, like 10 to 40-yard boxes that are picked up by a separate truck.
Mm-hmm.
They come off the back of the truck and sit on the ground, and then it also includes compacted containers. So like at the Isiqua Commons, they have two large compactors, some multifamily have compactors as well, and they need to be picked up and taken to the landfill separately. And then the, for the next chart, the rate study looked at estimating the revenue from each city if they took that city's rates and applied it to our customer mix. So this isn't the overall gross revenue from each of these cities' contracts, this is if you took our customer mix and applied those cities' rates to it. You can see that Isiqua falls right in the middle of all of those cities, with the Renton and Bellevue being about 1% to 1.5% different from us, and then as low as Kent being 10% lower than us, and Semamish being about 20% higher than our rates. Any questions on that one? I think for me, the interesting part comes in comparing that chart to the next one. We probably can't put them both up there at the same time, but we also looked at the most recent procurement processes for these eight cities, and part of the reason we selected them is because they had more recent procurement processes than our own. The most reason was Kirkland. On the note there, it says that they went out to bid for their contract, and the contract that won the bid process would have raised their rates by 10%, and so the council opted to exercise their two-year option. So their rates did not change in 2017, even though they would have if they had gone with the winning proponent of their RFP process. So the interesting comparison between the total revenue at our service levels and the procurement process results is that all of the cities with higher estimated total revenue than Isiqua at our rates, during their last procurement process, had a decrease. And then all of the ones below us, during their last procurement process, had an increase. So that tells me that we're kind of in a good spot in the middle there, where the contracts above us seem to have a little bit of room to give, and so they got a decrease, and the contracts below us were looking for a little bit more revenue when they went to bid, so. So this is kind of the example of how we're going to use some of this information to make a recommendation. Any questions about that one? So an additional point we're looking at is the outcomes of other recent procurements, so like Seattle has a procurement out right now. I believe that they're announcing on January 8th who the winner is. Because they're so big, they tend to move the market a little bit, so depending on who wins that or who's doing other things, it could provide a good opportunity for us. I'm not sure. We have to see kind of how, how that turns out. And, well, this is all kind of good information for seeing where we're at regionally. It's not for sure, formula, you can't take this data and kind of say X plus Y equals yes, go out to bid, or no, don't. So we're taking this into account along with our discussions with Recology right now to see whether we can add additional services through an extension, or whether they'd be willing to do other things. So we're kind of in the middle of that right now, and by February 5th, like I said, we'll come back to the full council and make our recommendation and lay out kind of all of the different options that are available at that time. The budget in 2018 for OS includes consultant dollars if we were to run an RFP process, as well as calculating in the labor for that. And the rough timeline is the last thing in the handout of where we go from here. It's a pretty tight timeline in terms of running a large procurement, but it's pretty doable still.
Actually, I don't have a question, Micah. What I wanted to say was all the information you presented in the packet, the real detailed pieces, but then this sort of higher-level summary was great.
Oh, good. Thank you.
So I loved it, it kind of set a framework around what that decision-making process will look like, but providing us that context of all the other cities and then summarizing it for us is really, really helpful.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
It looks like we have a little bit of time, like February is where you're looking for a time to make a recommendation.
Correct.
And, and based upon your presentation and the information that I have here, I would, my first instinct, so this is not a final, I'm not casting my lot right now, but I'm not sure, I, my first instinct, let's not go through the hassle if we don't think there's something to be gained for it. And there's some value to them, so I love the fact that you have a customer survey, and I hope you've got, it sounds like you have some more specifics, so when you talked about, you know, potential improvements, I mean, that would be something to talk about. But I think that is, and thank you for what you pointed out about those two graphs, about Semamish, Maple Valley, Shoreline, and Renton, getting a better deal, and the others actually can't, you know, having, seeing slight increases. That's, that's pretty good data. And, and if we have, and so, price-wise, things aren't likely to move a lot, but Seattle will tell us, so that's, that'll be the thing I definitely want to wait for. And we'll, we'll look there and revisit it after that. That's my feel.
And that's kind of the question, is how do we get the best value for the residents? Is, you know, is there, is it a good time, do we think, to go out to the market and test it and see what rates come back?
Yeah, and I do, the other thing I'll throw in there is, is high customer satisfaction and seeing that a lot, that's worth something, it's worth a lot to me, that I don't have to deal with hassles. So that's, you know, there's monetary value to that as well, so I don't want to leave that off the table, because anecdotally, that's what I feel with this company, from my service from the previous company, and to see that the surveys saying the same thing, that, right, that means something to me. So with that, this is just informational from now, like I say, we'll be looking at this further in, in February, but if anyone from the audience would like a comment, please step forward. Take your turns gently, please.
I would think you'd be very wise to do the two-year extension, but I think their service has been great. Their store over there is great, they even recycle styrofoam. My, my biggest concern is with them and the city in terms of not getting enough information out about the services. Channel 21 should be having a bunch of stuff, there's kids, production, video production kids at the middle school and high school would love to do some stuff about how to sort stuff. If you, well, go down our alley, Bill, and you'll see the, and if you look in a recycle bin, it is pretty bad. There's a lot of people putting the wrong things in, and this whole thing with China resaying a lot of too much, you're saying it's too much of your garbage, not your recyclables, or the recyclables are too contaminated, and they're going to, that could change dramatically the cost to our companies about not being able to, to send that stuff to, to China till it gets significantly cleaner, and it is not clean. When you go around and look at some of the commercial dumpsters for recycling, it's really bad what gets in there. And I just kind of feel sorry for all the garbage that they are, are taking that should be in their recycle rather than in the garbage. So I think that's a big thing we need to do and clean up our act, and it's a good company, and the store over there at Gilman Village is really cool.
Thank you, David. Any?
I'm going to echo and amplify Dave a little bit. Having been around the commercial dumpsters a lot, the commercial recycling is, hey, you know what?
You left a note in, Connie.
Well, can I, you, never mind, I'm not even going to go further, because I could amplify that, too. So the recycling is, is sort of improperly used by most commercial areas with no visible sign of improvement in six years. No particular effort to improve it, and no pathway to, for anybody who, it makes crazy to get it better. It costs the landlords to do composting, and so you have these huge dumpster, dumpsters filled with things that are compostable, because the landlord doesn't want to do it, and it's not required. And then, I'm going to put on my Josh Share hat and talk about Starbucks and the restaurants and their recycling, the single star is Taco Time, and the rest has been a failure. And is that the city? Is that the garbage company? Is that education? I'm not sure. Now, some of the statistics that I think are missing are, for years, we've been hearing that the people are not recycling as much as they used to. So I don't know if that statistic is still holding true. It's showing that they want to, but if they want to so badly, then why is it showing that they aren't, and that we aren't increasing in our cleanliness and our recycling? Part of that, I think, is the multifamily units. The multifamily recycling, as we increase in that style, is poor. You have big dumpsters with little teeny tiny cans with no particular direction, and everybody just throws whatever they want to in them, if you've had the privilege of wandering through the multifamily dumpsters, yay, me! Okay. So all of those things need to be part of any new contract, even if we have to pay a little more, or you all, the city, needs to pay to do that. Now, on the upside, I think they're an awesome company, and I think if we could get them to do the programs, we could have a lot of success. So I would continue a contract, but up the ante. Thanks. Thanks.
Thank you, Connie. Anyone else?
And he's sending us many dumpsters.
So, that would wrap this up for now as informational. You've covered us. Nice gathering of data. Thank you, Micah, and sharing that all with us over these days. And we'll see you back in February, I assume.
And Bill, I do want to say, I think the public comments were like spot-on. I loved it. I thought that was great.
Yes.
I just want to add, we're really lucky to have members of the public that check out commercial dumpsters and even the aesthetics of polls. It's amazing.
Great. Thank you. All right. And yeah, echo that, that we can, there is room for improvement in, in our own style. And if we have so many people wanting to do it right, we should give them opportunities to do it right. All right. So, next up is traffic calming for Old Town neighborhood. All right, we have folks gathered amongst us, Kurt and the fourth. All right. So, you want to do a little precursor to this, or you want me to, Kurt? Somebody's got to do a little precursor to this. I don't care, you or me. All right, go ahead. Okay, Kurt Seaman, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. We're very happy to be here tonight. I'm not sure exactly how to follow that last conversation, but we'll, we'll just jump in here. The dumpster, I won't try to, I won't try to tie those together. But, so, we're very happy here to talk to you all about traffic calming in Old Town. As you all know, there's been a long history of concerns with traffic in this neighborhood, both north and south of East Sunset. The area is impacted by traffic growth in the region as we all are, specifically the adjacent school traffic and cut-through traffic that we know is trying to either avoid congestion on East Sunset or Front Street. So, over the years, the city's collected data and studied the area many times. In the end, it resulted in turn restriction signs along East Sunset. We know that these signs have had limited success in reducing traffic and cut-through in the neighborhood and also volumes and speeds. So, we've heard from the neighborhood that it's, that we need to do more. Most recently, we had a very well-attended open house in late, in the late summer. Great turnout, lots of great ideas. And I think what we heard most clearly was that there needed to be solutions implemented right away. So, a traditional traffic approach, a traditional approach to traffic calming is to poll the community, have them vote, require that a majority of the community agree on anything before we would install it. And based on past history in this neighborhood, we know that it's very difficult to get the necessary percent agreement to move forward with any significant traffic calming devices. So, we're very excited here tonight to, to walk you through, present a different approach, a pilot program that we think's going to have some real benefits to the old, Old Town. And I've invited our senior engineer, John Mortensen, who works in our group, transportation engineer, and he's going to walk you through the details of what that program will look like. So, I'll turn it over to you, John.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Kurt. I'm really happy to be here to talk about the specifics of our traffic calming pilot program. As you mentioned, my name's John Mortensen. I'm a senior engineer in public works engineering. So, we went out and collected a lot of traffic data. We set out traffic counting tubes which count traffic volumes along with speed. Then, we met with the neighborhood, I believe on August 31st, and gathered a lot of input. And the feedback we got was that the neighborhood was really in favor of traffic calming. And then, from there, we went and designed our approach to the traffic calming for Old Town, which we're here tonight presenting in front of you guys. Then, the next steps going forward are to, on January 6th, in the morning, we're going to meet at the Trail House and then walk, do a walkabout and walk to the different sites and talk about them with the neighborhood. Then, we're hoping on January 16th, we begin installing the devices. And then, at that point, a 10-week trial period will begin where we'll be collecting more speed and traffic data and communicating, getting feedback from the neighborhood to find out what's working, what's not working. And in addition to the neighborhood, we'll be talking to operations, see how the different devices impact what they do for maintenance, and Eastside Fire and Rescue, and how the traffic calming impacts what they do. And then, our plan is to return to the Council Infrastructure Committee around April or May and present the results of the pilot program. When most people think about traffic calming, the typical device that people think about is a speed hump. And when we first started planning out our traffic calming, our first response was to put a bunch of speed humps everywhere and have that be our only device. And we started looking into it and thinking about it some more, and we just felt like there's a lot more that we could do, especially with it being a pilot program, to see what works, what doesn't work. So, but we do have a speed hump going in, and there's some speed humps. One of the things that we did find when we're planning our design on this is we met with both the city's operations department and Eastside Fire and Rescue. And operations was really in favor of speed humps, that you can really design them so a snowplow can get over them. The Eastside Fire and Rescue was not as in favor of speed humps.
Just, just to clarify, John, what you're talking about here are strictly temporary devices. Is that correct?
Correct.
For the trial period? They're not concrete, they're not asphalt, they're some sort of temporary thing that's installed and be, could be removed?
That's correct, that everything we've designed is that way, if we don't like it, we can remove it and it won't look like anything was ever there.
Thank you.
So, a speed table is basically a speed hump with a flat area in between. And so, we're going to try two speed tables out. We're going to try one that's 10 and a half feet long and another that's 14 feet long. That way, we can get a comparison on how they feel to drive over different shapes of speed tables. And then, a speed cushion is basically a speed hump, but with openings in between them for larger axle vehicles like fire engines and ambulances. And so, when we met with Eastside Fire and Rescue, they really had a very strong preference for speed cushions. But at the same time, operations from a maintenance point of view was not as favorable with speed cushions. And next traffic calming device I'm going to talk about are traffic circles. And so, if you've gone into Seattle, they have quite a few traffic circles, basically an island in the middle of an intersection. They're not roundabouts. And as you approach a traffic circle, you slow down to drive around it. One of the drawbacks with traffic circles is they do delay response time for emergency vehicles. According to the Institute of Transportation Engineers, you lose about five to eight seconds in response time with traffics, for each traffic circle that you have. And then, the next device are chicanes, which from a, I guess, my personal opinion of driving, I really like how chicanes slow me down going through neighborhoods. You basically take the curb and you build them out a little bit, and that way, you have to drive around them and forces you to slow down. One of the drawbacks is from a street sweeping point of view, it can be a little bit more difficult, and you might have to manually sweep around the chicanes. And so, this is a map of what we have planned for Old Town. And so, we tried focusing most on Bush, Andrews, and Alder. And so, when we looked at our date, the traffic data, the highest speeds and the highest traffic volumes were on Bush. So, we put the most devices on there, and we wanted to try a series of cushions, a circle, a chicane, and a speed table and along there because we figured with the most people driving on Bush, we're going to get the most feedback from people of getting to try the different devices, see how they work, what they like and don't like about them. Then, over onto Andrews, we've got a chicane set up when you first come from second, and then a circle and our speed hump. And then, Alder, we decided to try a table and a speed cushion at two different locations. And one of the things I'm really curious about on Alder, the east-west traffic, they've got the stop signs. So, in addition to having traffic calming devices on our two longer blocks, we've got stop signs to help slow people down. And also, during the trial period, one of the things that we have planned is to bag the no-left-turn signs that are on Sunset and see how restricting left turns on Sunset works or doesn't work during the trial period. Couple of things that we're going to keep in mind for construction when these devices are installed, that we've got in the specifications that the contractor's going to do a lot of neighborhood notifications. So, when your block or your street is getting a traffic calming device installed on it, that we've got a prior notification with a door hanger or something similar, at least two days in advance and no more than five days in advance because if we do it too soon, then you'll have forgotten about it. And I want to make sure that they coordinate with Recology on making sure that your solid waste and recycling, properly sorted recycling are picked up. And that they'll work with the school district. So, when we talk to the school district, there's no main bus routes, but there are the smaller buses that come in through there. And so, we're going to work with the transportation department, the school district, to make sure that there aren't any delays in pickup and drop-off for the students. And then, the final thing is for the traffic control, depending on the location and what they're going to be installing, we might have some short-term road closures with some small local detours or flaggers with one-lane closures. And so, then, the next steps, we're going to award a contract to a construction contractor. And as I mentioned earlier in the night, on January 6th, we have a neighborhood walkthrough where we're going to walk to the different locations on that map and talk about what we have and listen to the people in the neighborhood. And then, the contractor will install the devices, at which point, the 10-week trial period will begin where we will be collecting more traffic counts and speed data, see if we're reducing the cut-through traffic, see if we're reducing the speed, and then communicating and talking to the neighbors to find out how it's working for them. What devices do the neighbors like? Are they noticing a reduction in cut-through traffic and reduction in speed? And we're going to take all that information and put together a recommendation to come back to the, to CIC and present it. And when we do our neighborhood walkthrough, one of the things that we're going to have is a brochure for the people. And so, what we're going to do is we open the brochure. We'll just talk a little bit about what is traffic calming and the benefits. And then, we'll have a map showing what we've got proposed for the different locations. And then, a basic description of what the different traffic calming devices are. And then, in the back, will be a page for notes. That way, as people are walking around, they can take notes and grab what they liked and didn't like. So, I'm going to pass this around to the council members to take a look at our draft brochure.
Thank you.
It's a draft, we're not quite, to get an idea what, what, is the D?
Yes, thank you. You, you got your time. We'll, we'll get to your questions. So, or is that, you have more to tell us?
No, I, I've told everything I've got to say, so.
Okay.
I'm going to turn it over to you guys.
After you've answered any comments or questions, you, concerns you have.
And just a full disclosure, both Mary Lou and I live in Old Town, so we're talking our streets here. So, any particular questions, Paul and Mary Lou? Where are you going to start here?
I don't have, I don't have any questions at this time, just a couple simple comments. And I'm looking forward to hearing what members, visitors here tonight have to add to the conversation. I'll just, I'll just wait till after then. I don't, I thank you for the information. Yeah.
So, thank you for your presentation, and thank you for presenting it to the people that are here that live in the neighborhood because they are really going to give us some input on what they see. My question was, how come we're not installing any devices on the north-south streets that lead to these, these long cross streets? And I guess I ask it from the perspective of, I want, when people come into these neighborhoods, I want them to know right away that it's kind of a traffic-combed area. And then, the second question is, in regard to begging the signs that say no turns, during this test period, will we be posting either reader boards or something that says speed-controlled neighborhood or, I get, and again, asked from the perspective of, are we actually encouraging people to go through, and are we going to draw traffic in for a period of time till they hit a speed device and realize it? So, those were the two questions.
Okay, so, I'll, I'll answer the second one first. That's the easier of the two. So, we've got signs planned that are going to say, and I don't remember the exact words, something along the lines of entering Old Town Traffic Calming Area or
Ah.
Old Town Traffic Calming Zone. And I guess to answer your first question on the north-south.
Let's stick on the second question.
Oh, sure, yes.
First. I, I like that idea. That's great. I would challenge you to listen to the community comments here or think yourself. Traffic, I'm an engineer, traffic calming means something to me. It does not mean anything to the general public, and so, we may have to come up with some language that gives them an idea of what we're doing. Because I floated that one off a few people, and they were like, no idea what you're talking about. So, I mean, the first question.
Yeah, so, when I looked at the speed data on the north-south streets, vehicles were driving a lot slower on them, and so, that's why I originally went with the east-west. One good thing about the devices that we've got planned is they're movable and reusable. And that might be something to consider is taking one of our speed humps and at some point, testing it out on a north-south street and getting the feeling of we're entering a slow area. This is not a fast-cut-through area.
Awesome. Great answer. Thank you.
That it, Mary Lou?
That was it for me.
All right. So, my question is thinking about this, when this is happening, I'm assuming you didn't say that there will be tubes out or something that's going to be measuring traffic speeds and counts and so forth, as was done earlier in the year, right? So, that while this is happening, we're going to be collecting the data of average speeds going through on what street and here and there and so forth and those. All right. Yes.
So, just, so just to, and to follow up on that, there's actually, so, short answer is yes, we'll be collecting data both, we have data now before we've implemented this and during, and then, of course, at the end. And so, there's the data, there's the speed tubes that we'll get counts and, and speeds from. There's also our, our new tool, Peak Democracy, which we're going to be implementing on this project as well. And I'm, I'm not the expert on that. I think on the 6th, we'll be able to talk a little bit more about how that all works. And we'll have some more information on our website as well. But the, the short answer of how that works is it will allow the public in real time to comment on this project and see what other people are saying about it. So, you'll be able to go onto our portion of the website, the traffic calming, the Old Town Traffic Calming part of the web and see, and use this tool and see what other people in the neighborhood are saying about this program. So, there's two ways. There's the, more of the hard science data, speed count, volume part of it, and then, the softer community input part. And both of those
And both of those are going to be very important to us in evaluating how effective these devices are, so.
Excuse me. Mary Lou, there are devices north-south, there's one at Fifth and Andrews. There's a traffic circle there.
It's kind of looking at Sixth, Sixth, and Fourth, and Third, and-- I was just thinking, there's a lot of north-south ones that aren't covered, but you're right. There's definitely one at Fifth and Andrews.
Yeah, but not at Sixth. And they are those--
There's a traffic circle at Fifth and Andrews.
It shows a traffic circle proposed there. So I'm just, because some people might not see this, so let's just go over that. I'm just going to, let's see, so if we start it on Bush from Second going east, there's that first thing is that cushion, the separated speed hump, right? And then a traffic circle at the Fourth, and then the chicane at Fifth, and a speed table in between Fifth and Sixth, right? And some of these, in the beginning, you showed them as kind of like hard compacted rubber, and then like the traffic circles, the pictures you had were concrete and so forth. They're not going to be concrete. They're also going to be some sort of rubber or movable towers or something that's definitely not.
So the chicanes and the circles, they'll be made out of extruded concrete, but we're going to do it in a way that'll be removable. So we're going to put some, basically a bisquion barrier down and some construction paper down, and then use some rebar to attach it. That way, it won't go anywhere during the trial period, but we'll be able to easily remove it.
Okay. All right. Great. Okay, and then I'm just going to reiterate here, coming down Andrews, again from Second, the first thing that hits is a chicane there in mid-block between Fourth. At Fourth, there is nothing, right? At Fifth and Andrews is a traffic circle and then a hump, right? A speed hump between Fifth and Sixth, right? And then on this map also, it does show places for those signs you were talking about, Mary Lou, at entering on Fifth and Sixth, and on Bush, there's marked three signs to be put there. And then on Alder, again coming from Second, there's nothing until between Third and Fifth, which is, that's the speed table, which is the long, flat speed hump, right? And then further down between Fifth and Sixth is the cushion, again the split speed hump for white-track fire engines and so forth, which they tend to like that because they can go right through them. But cars, one wheel, one side of the car is going to have to hit the hump, the other side can hit the hole, right? But they're too far apart for average cars to do that, right? Okay, so that's the advantage on that, still slows down cars, but doesn't slow down fire trucks is the reason for that. Okay? And we're looking at, and I'm just kind of reiterating some of the stuff again, so people are hearing this, so when you come over here to comment. Meeting on the 6th, walk through the neighborhood, looking at all this directly, and then sometime after that, later on in January, the mid-to-latter part is when these things would be installed for approximately 10 weeks, collecting all this data, letting us live with them for a while. 10 weeks isn't too long a time of period, but long enough to get a feel for it. If you're talking about changing people's habits, it takes a while. Some people may do things for a couple of times and then realize they don't like that, right? And then they'll change. And I do want to comment, because I know folks will comment on the signs, and I'll tell you that when Kurt first told me about this, he told me, "Sit down." Because he wanted to suggest that they cover the signs and he thought I was going to fall down when he told me that. I'm telling stories on you, right? And I didn't. And I'll tell you why, because the point of this for me, and I'm not saying I agree with everything, it's going to be all fun, because I have to live with it too, but the point is to see what the effect these things have on people driving, right? And if you tell them they can't turn there and drive there, you're not really getting a pilot project with data that's accurate, right? Because if they can't turn legally left there, all you're going to get is the people that illegally turn left and get into the neighborhoods. And so you're not changing that. So the question is, if we decide, for myself, thinking something in the future is going to work, where those left-turn signs wouldn't be there, so those of us that live in the neighborhood could turn in, then we would know these would have the desired effect or not. So that's the kind of data we're trying to get to. I'm trying to just sum that up, and I'm kind of airing a lot of information here, but want to make sure everybody's seeing that picture. So that's kind of that reason for saying, okay, let's take that control off. Let's let this be a full experiment on what people will do. And I say, the first couple of weeks, you know, people might just start bailing down those streets and all of a sudden they're going to go, hey, this isn't any faster, I'm going down to the light, right? So the first week or two, it might be weird, and then other patterns of travel might start showing up after that. We'll have to see on that. Mary Lou?
So I did have one more question, and it has to do with the trailhead. And so frequently, when traffic is backed up on Sunset Way, and I'm standing at Sixth, you just see cars peel off and go into the trailhead and pick up the alley and enter the neighborhood. So what, lots. So, you know, what are, is there any, is that an issue you're aware of? Is that, are we doing something in here that might discourage that behavior?
I heard about that behavior pretty late in the process, but that's something we can look into. I don't have any solutions tonight.
Okay. So another question is, there's a plan here, and there's a cost to the plan, which I'm not sure we were given this evening. Is this an extremely expensive pilot, or is the potential, based on what we hear from the community and the committee tonight, that we may recommend adding a device here or there somewhere in this?
So that's an excellent question, and we're actually just now reviewing bids that came in today. So if I can speak precisely to your, answer your question in great detail, these devices aren't cheap, either to purchase or to install. And honestly, the installation of, as you might expect, the installation of an interim device is similar to the installation of a permanent device. And that part of it, the costs are similar. The good news is that because they're interim devices and because they're, at least with the humps, are rubberized material that we can reuse again and again, presumably, the cost to the city is something that we can spread out over other projects potentially. So there is that. Your question about, is there, I think that we're probably, cost-wise, we're getting close to what's a reasonable amount of money to spend on a pilot program. To your comments about the north-south streets and their opportunities to install more, I think it would be our recommendation at this point. So we have a lot of devices here, we feel already, and we have a variety of devices. And I think it would be staff's recommendation to go with this, do the 10-week program, see where we're at, see what the data shows us, see what the community reaction to this is, and take it from there. So that was, I think that would be our recommendation at this point.
Thanks, Kurt.
And just to add to that, because I think there's a lot of other neighborhoods that are interested in something like this, Highlands, other ones. And so this is kind of a pilot, as you will, that maybe then these devices then go be tried in other neighborhoods, that they might get to see what they, how they work there. And again, different neighborhoods, different devices might have a better, more or less effect, right? So that's what we're trying to find out. Okay. Mary Lou, Paul, anything else, or ready for public comment? I know you all have been very excited and waiting for this and very patient. So please just head on up to make your comment, and you can just line up and get ready, and we want to hear what you have to say for sure.
Hi, John Levine. I live the second house in on Bush Street, right off of Second, on the south side of the street. Yellow house, white picket fence, I'm sure you've seen, it's really cute. So first of all, thank you so much, because I've been there 11 years and we've met in front of the council a bunch of times, and there's been, this room has been full. And sometimes East Side Fire was like, eh, we don't really want to do anything, and other times it's happened. And then one time, there was a measurement study done in the summer, which is kind of ridiculous because school was out, but, right? So real quick, because I have a couple of thoughts. So for me, volume is more of an issue than speed, based on where I live. But I imagine mid-block, speed is more of an issue than volume. And you could argue that, well, if we reduce speed, then we're going to reduce volume because people will want to go this other way. And I think from a high school kid perspective, that might make sense, right? There's this notion of how fast can we get through? But from a commuter perspective, when they come off of the freeway and they turn down and they see Sunset, guilty, I turn right and I go up on Alder, but I drive really slowly, because I live on the south side and I take advantage of the one place you can turn. So, you know, I think we have to look at whether we're trying to solve a volume problem or a speed problem, or a both problem. And given that, right, for me, it's about volume. So let's talk about the signs. I think that statistically speaking, if we bag the signs, you change the results, because you're going from studying traffic at a time when the signs weren't bagged to studying traffic at a time the signs were bagged, which leads to my next question. Are we looking to capture driver feedback on what they like driving through? Because I think I heard that. Are we looking to capture neighborhood feedback on which one stops the volume and slows down the people as much? Because I honestly don't care whether the high school student prefers a speed hump to a speed bump to a traffic circle to a police, I don't care. I just don't want them ripping around the corner anymore. So, like, I'm actually more in favor of having regular maintenance to cut back the tree limbs and putting bright orange flags on the signs so people see them and recognize, hey, I'm about to break the law. So, and then my, so my last question, given that these things are all in a row, and this is kind of an engineering question, they're all different, how will we know which one works in what way? Meaning, right now, you know, I can imagine you come across the speed hump and you're going to drive, you know, going back to my high school days, as fast as I possibly can to get to the next speed bump. But here, right, how will we know that A is helping more than E, or E is helping more than D? Because there's such a little amount of time to kind of get back up to that speed to slow down again. So how will we figure out which device is actually having the material impact on the volume and the speed problem we're trying to solve? That's all I've got.
Thank you, John.
Ellen Moore, 290 Northeast Alder. I'm on the north side, and I live right on the corner, and there is a stop sign on Alder just before my corner. That does not stop people from speeding. Oh. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, that doesn't stop anyone from speeding. It seems that they like to speed to see how fast they can get to the next stop sign. So I would strongly encourage a hump between Second and Third on Alder. The fire trucks, when they come back, when they come in on Sunset, they always turn up on Third and then come down Alder so that they can drive into the back of the fire station. So I think a hump would work there the best for them. But also, we have a lot of little kids that live on the end of our block, and there's kids for baseball, et cetera. And so I think we need a hump in between Third and Second on Alder. And the other thing is the Third Avenue shot. There, it seems to be, it's ripe for motorcycles to just come off of Sunset, and they buzz on all the way to the Third Avenue Bridge because there's no bollard there anymore. So they can take that as a shortcut. This usually happens on Sundays when the car shows are going on, and they, it's like a racetrack. And so I think there needs to be attention given to that. So essentially, I think that's it. Stop sign doesn't stop people from speeding, and something needs to be done about Third Avenue.
Thank you, Ellen.
Well, I'm glad we've gotten this far. I live at 375 Southeast Andrews, so right off of Fourth. When the cars turn on Fourth to go west, I see there's nothing there, but that's okay. I am not for taking the signs down for the no-left or right off of Sunset Way, just to do a study at this time. To me, that's saying, okay, for 10 weeks, you can turn, that's confusing to the people. So then, there are a lot of people that don't turn because they still fear there's a policeman. Because when those were first put up, I'm not sure what year it was, over 10 years ago, for the first three or four months, we did have police activity. And then if we called a policeman, we could get him there and he'd do one ticket and take off. And then if we called again, we were just told they had one traffic policeman for all of Issaquah. So good luck for us. But I do not believe those should go away. And also, the problem we have in Old Town is we don't have crosswalks on a lot of these, like, well, there's sidewalks missing on the south side of Andrews across from me. So when somebody comes to the sidewalk, they have to walk into the gravel, and there's no crosswalks in any of the side streets. There are crosswalks on East Sunset Way, coming into Fourth, Fifth, and Sixth, but there's no actual painted crosswalks. So when we get into these traffic circles or bumps and everything, we do not have curb and gutter. We have strictly gravel. So you're going to put a speed bump in the middle of a street that doesn't have a white line, but I know what they're going to do. They're going to go over into the gravel to go around. And so I guess my question is, are those speed bumps going to take into the gravel also? They are going to go just around those speed bumps as well, like there on Fifth. They're just going to go right, because there's no curb and gutter. There's no crosswalk, no curb and gutter, nothing. They're just going to go right around everything that's put there with no curb and gutter and no crosswalks. So we've still got safety issues, yes, we have the speed. Down the road, we are going to have to look at the alley, because now that Bush Street is really getting backed up, Andrews has slowed down a little bit because people can't, if they're heading east and come up to Second Avenue, now that the light is there, they can't see to turn, to go south, they can't see. So they are using Bush a lot more. But now we have the habit, when they see a lot of people on Bush, they're going down the alley between Bush and Andrews at high rates of speed. I don't know, are we allowed to put a two-by-four out there? Or would we be in trouble? I know, we'd be in trouble. But at the same time, that's, those alleys are so little and there are kids playing down there. But that's usually the high school kids. So I'm all for the study. Yeah, it is kind of weird to have different things, and how will we know which one works? I'm not sure. But please do not remove the signs, this is the practice people have been in. And I do have a question, after the pilot is taken away, how long is it going to take another study to get the permanent installed? Can't ask questions? We can't, right?
Yes, you can ask questions. We're hearing your questions. We may not be able to answer that directly immediately right now, but we're hearing that.
So I think by the next meeting on the 6th, we need an answer on that too, because we've waited long enough and we've given so much input and so many studies, and now you want another study? No, we need solutions. It's been too many years of this, and I appreciate all your work. Thank you.
Thanks, Jenny. I know there's some more folks out here. There we go.
Hi, I live on Sixth and Andrews on the dead-end part. My concern is if--
What's your name, please?
Angie Stark.
Thank you.
My concern is if you hide those signs, the people, Sixth doesn't have any speed or calming going on, and that is a big concern with the amount of cut-through that we see and the speed. And I think an early deterrent would be better than hitting it on Andrews or Bush. So moving one of those. And same, we're seeing a lot more cut-through going so that they could hit Alder too. So even something on that, because traffic is getting a lot more backed up with the new signal at Second, and I'm seeing a lot more cut-through heading east on Andrews. That wasn't even the high school students, a lot more commuter traffic cutting through. And that's new behavior that I'm seeing for the behavior since the signal went in. So my, if you're gun, if you're-- So my, if you're gun, if you're going to hide those signs, I really think something needs to happen on Sixth on either side, just to slow traffic down.
Thank you, Angie. David?
Thank you. One thing I've, I've noticed in, by the signal, and it must probably change some other things, is the traffic northbound on Second. You know, they all knew there was a stop sign there. But now they, two or three blocks away, they can see that green light. And the, the traffic has definitely increased in speed on Second. But that's, but it seems like the backups on westbound, PM westbound on East Sunset is better. I don't know what you've found in your, but it seems like it, it moves, moves faster. It's, it's not the one car at a time kind of thing. And so there's chunks of them that move. So that's, that's been an improvement. If you don't, I guess for part of the time, if you don't bag the signs, I'm not sure we're, we're testing everything. So I can understand why that. I think the, the point about Sixth Avenue is kind of interesting that this is one of the, I'm not sure how fast they are on Sixth, but they think they're going to be real, they are fast on Bush. And that's where we, you know, Pam Fox could tell you about that because she lives right at that corner, not the side where they can end up in the yard so much though. But I think we might want to think of some kind of device or some hint on Sixth at the start there that something might be happening. In terms of the, the trailhead, you know, these places right here are, it's kind of, they're real close to that. And do we, we don't gain any parking by having, their trailhead parking by that. I'm just wondering if we should be blocking that off so that alley is a dead end and not connected to the trailhead. I, I just don't, I just think that would make sense. Um, you know, with this, they must probably, we're not going to try and do that if the sign is bagged, but I'm just not sure that's where we need people going through there. And what is the speed on an alley? If it's, it shouldn't be 25, but there's not one speed limit sign in the whole city on an alley. And 25 is way too fast on, on those alleys.
Um, we'll, we'll check on that. I think it's 15, but I'm not sure. Under 20.
Hi, Ron Fall, live on Squawk. I served on, I currently serve on PPC and I served on the Traffic Task Force. And one of the things that we looked at was Old Town. I think there's two other topics that are probably not being discussed here, and that is a mobile photo camera, um, which actually can ticket cars. I don't know the legalities of that in King County, but I think that would be maybe an alternative. And because then you can move it to different streets. And so people eventually would build a reputation that this is a photo radar neighborhood and you never really know where the camera is going to be. So therefore, kids would be like, I'm not going to speed down this neighborhood because it just isn't worth it. And the second thought was based on what this pilot program costs and the maintenance costs associated to maintaining the cirques and then the, the humps and so on, is what would it cost to actually hire a police officer, a traffic cop, to do traffic radar in this neighborhood for those key peak times? And then do the analysis? Because then you have someone who can actually move around. If you see someone who's doing reckless driving, they may not necessarily be speeding, but they may be driving recklessly or using the, um, the gravel strip. But some thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
My name is Gary Shinkowski and I'm a Andrews resident, almost across the street from my favorite jogger, Bill. Whose comments about the sign I'm still kind of chewing on. And I don't want to beat a horse to death, so I won't. But I don't quite see why running a caravan of new cars off of Sunset or Second just to test how well they react to the new speed control items is, is really what we want to do. Aren't we there to test the traffic that's already there and not create a whole new lineup of candidates? I just have you think about that for a while. Do we really need an onslaught of new cars to test our thinking? And secondly, um, I've been a resident of Issaquah now for about three years. And I would classify traffic enforcement as near nonexistent. I don't think I have ever seen a car pulled over for any traffic infraction while I've been here, although I've witnessed hundreds. So I think part and parcel of, of your solution or idea must include some kind of enforcement issues. Either the radar suggestion, the person ahead of me mentioned, or some kind of patrol within a budget. I think it has to go part and parcel with it. So thank you.
Thank you. Gary?
I'm, I'm still sorry to, I'm still John Levan. I still live on Bush Street. I still live down Alder for now.
Can you go in for a second? It's okay.
Two seconds. So I forgot to mention something before, which is bicycle traffic. Um, you know, we, because we don't have curbs, we don't have sidewalks, things like that, we do have a lot of bicycle traffic coming down there. And I know as a city, we've taken a lot of effort to help make this a bicycle-friendly city. And how many of these solutions will wind up impacting that? I, obviously, the humps won't. And the circles, yeah, well, you know, a little bit. But I think we should just take into account that. And then I love the idea on some sort of technology solution, we could even use Verizon Small Cell Network.
Too soon, too soon.
Hi, I'm Kathy Harrison. I also live in this neighborhood. Used to live near Angie and on Sixth, on, uh, Andrews. I'm on Sixth now. It's a nightmare. I, I can't even fathom, I haven't been part of all this for years and years. I can't even believe that this is happening without something on Sixth.
Another place.
Um, I, I just, I feel like Sixth really needs something. Especially if we're going to take those signs down, but we already have a problem. All these straights is why people go fast. So they'll slow down here, but as soon as they round that corner, the second they round that corner already, they're flying. So that's kind of an issue. And I imagine, I, I don't know if there's another long, like maybe Fifth, I don't know. I don't know because I'm not there. But that Sixth is, they're pulling off Sunset and coming down there. It only takes them two seconds to go fast. And maybe I'll get in trouble? I've put garbage cans in the middle of the road, like, and it works. Slows them down. Almost hit my kid, you know? I'm like, I don't care if I get a ticket. I really, they need to slow down on Sixth, so. I think that if you block those signs and you say you can come into the neighborhood, you will have less traffic cutting through the gravel parking lot. Because they cut through the gravel parking lot because it's not illegal. So I'm not saying cover those signs, but I think that might help that issue. So if you can't afford, and a police officer would also help, like, I think that makes a huge difference when they're sitting there. But it's so, so, so infrequent. So anyway, thank you.
You can't sit here all night and not say something.
Hi, Rich Cook. We've lived here about 20 years down here on Andrews. Sixth Avenue is a freeway. You have to understand, that's Indy 500 for you right there. Most of the, I see more commuters cutting through than I, than I do see high school kids. Everybody's saying, oh, these high schoolers. It's, no, it's people going to work. Fourth Avenue, Fourth Place, Jenny, you can, they come, tear off that and turn right. So having a roundabout on Fifth or whatever that thing is, I don't see why that's there. And what I don't understand is all your little speed humps, why don't you have the same device on each, on one street instead of having different ones at different points? So you can tell which is working. So do you want all As on Bush, all Bs on Andrews, instead of having multiple things at different points? Because that way, it doesn't show you, like with all the big trucks I have, I can go right over those humps. I can go right in between them. But you have these devices, different devices, 50 feet apart. I don't understand, put the same device on, on one street, do it that way. But Sixth Avenue is a freeway. And you need to keep the signs for no left turns, no right, you know? It does help, um, we've only had, years ago, we had one kid hit on Andrews Street by a car. But when they come off of Fourth Place, it's like, it's all gravel. And it's like they can peel out and just balls to the wall and away we go. I mean, I've actually thrown rocks at cars and threatened, say, come on back, you know, I don't care. But another thing is, put some motorcycle police officers around. Then we wouldn't have to do all this. Because then I would say, oh, I'm not, I'm not getting a hundred dollar ticket. But in all the years we've lived here, I think I've seen five police officers. That's it. And they're there for like one or two cars and they leave and you're going, where are you going? Stay here, stay here and make, get more tickets. Yeah. But you need to keep the signs up. I would suggest all the same devices on one street, not multiple different devices. But honestly, this has been going on how many years? Is, is it ever going to happen? I doubt it. This is just talk, talk, talk. Let's keep talking, let's keep talking. Let's have another study. For what reason? Nothing's going to happen. It hasn't in the 20 years we've lived here. So in the 20 years we've lived here, this has been suggested. I'm getting older. It's not going to happen. What would happen is police officers. Because then you know, oh, they can see it. Speed humps are like, eh, it's annoying, but you know what? I can get around it. A police officer, you're not going to get around them. So that's all I got to say. Sorry.
No, sorry. Thanks, Rich.
So that makes so much sense to put the same on each road. Because then you're going to find out who, what they like instead, you know? So, and I, I can't remember who's, oh, you were saying, to have less volume is more important to you. And I get that, but someone's going to get hurt with the speed. So I feel like, I don't care how many cars come through, if they would just slow down. And so I'm going to keep putting garbage cans in the middle of the road. But seriously, that was a good idea. If you're going to put this stuff in, get a more consistent, I don't know if that makes sense, but, but, and police officers.
Thank you.
She does the garbage cans, I'm doing the two by fours. Another concern I have, which kind of was not spoken over, is there was $100,000 at the beginning of 2017 allotted for traffic calming. Here we are. By the time it goes in, it'll be middle of January, February? We don't know. The, and we know that contractors' costs go up and up and up. So we have $100,000 for traffic calming on basically four streets, which could go over to Birch too. I'm not sure why there's nothing on Birch. Maybe it's not as bad. But nobody really said the cost of this study. So if all these little things have a different cost, I'm kind of at the same deal. Like, if this strip is cheaper than the Chagrin, let's, let's do the cheapest for the study, leave the signs up. Because how much are we going to have left for the final, if and when we get it? Are we allowed in December once, or excuse me, January, at the next meeting to know exactly all of us that will be going to the meeting, know exactly what came in for the contracts? And will we have a chance to put our voices again forward? Or will the contract have been signed by then, by the city? Hoping not. Hopefully, we get to see what the cost is for that. So thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Does that wrap it up? I think everybody, you got anything to, no? Okay. I think everybody had a turn. All right. Thank you all very much. I think you had a lot of good input and a lot of good suggestions. This was where we start. So now we'll have a little discussion further on here with this after having heard that. Mary Lou?
So a couple of comments, a couple of questions. So Ron had talked about speed cameras, which currently under state law are only at schools only. So you can't put them everywhere, unfortunately. I just wanted to make a comment on the police officer piece as well. Because we currently have had a police force over the last three to four years, which has been understaffed with vacancies of three to four positions for three to four years. So we are having difficulty filling the current police, um, positions we have. And it's actually a significant issue that the city is trying to address. Beyond that, citations, the data shows that they're down by 75%. So you're not seeing them because they're not giving out tickets, because we don't have cops on motorcycles and cops in vehicles to do it. So I'm glad you brought that up. It's a significant issue. Council knows about it. Council knows we don't have enough police officers on the street right now. And that our police department would actually like to add officers beyond that. So the enforcement piece, it's going to come along separately from this, but we take that really seriously. I really feel strongly about the comments on Sixth. Just, not just because I live in the neighborhood, but because I've seen, it's a long enough stretch. They speed. I think when we look at this, I'd like to get Kurt to comment back about Sixth Avenue. Blocking the trailhead has been mentioned before, access from the trailhead to the alley. I'm really a big supporter of that. I'd like Kurt to talk to that one as well. The different devices on the different streets, um, that actually is really intriguing to me about making sure that we're knowing what, what behaviors we actually are getting. And so Kurt, if you could talk about why we have a variety on different streets and if we couldn't tweak it so that we have the same devices on, on different streets. The money piece, $100,000 was put in last year's budget, which as far as I can understand from our finance director, it's coming forward. And so we're carrying that into next year, but we're also added $100,000?
No.
We did not?
The reauthorization would have to happen at the first budget adjustment in 2018. And then what we informed the council was that as improvements are definitively defined and identif.
Identified.
And identified, I got my flashing light.
There you go.
That additional budget request would be requested if needed.
And council last year authorized the setting, setup of a new reserve fund, which was the surplus or excess revenue over cost for the speed camera on Second. And I believe that fund currently has 700-plus thousand dollars in it that is not allocated towards any safety projects right now. So there is an ongoing source of funds. If council decided that speed enforcement through a permanent installation needed to be funded, they could actually draw from that fund.
I presume so.
Okay. And then I guess the last comment is, I agree, I hate the study, study, study piece, that we're always studying and always studying. But this to me is actually, yes, we're going to gather some information, but it's a pilot that actually consists of infrastructure on the ground. And so for me, this is the first step. I, I think the staff was very thoughtful in trying to find a way where they're not coming in and telling you the solution for your neighborhood, but they're going to try something and let you tweak the solution. So it's been 10 or 15 years of absolute frustration. I think this is a really good first step. It's happening in January. I'm really excited about it. But I, some of your comments today, I'd like to hear what, what Kurt's answers are and how we might respond to some of your comments. So this is a pilot project and not a study to me. This is something happening on the ground. This could make a difference and I really hope it does.
So if I could add a little bit more to what you were just talking about, about this being another study? That's correct. It's an interim evaluation, I guess is how I would term it, as to what are the most effective devices for this condition in this neighborhood? And, you know, previously, it was mentioned, you know, 20 years ago, we went round and round about trying to get this 70%, you know, in accordance with our plan, you know, the policy program. in accordance with our plan, you know, the policy program of, before we can put any device in. And by doing it this way, not only is it providing additional data and working closer with the community, we're sidestepping that policy essentially of requiring 70% of the people to say, "Yeah, this is good, let's do it." Because I think even today, we haven't seen 70% of the community coming out saying, "We want stuff yet." There's certainly a large proportion of people that want something done. But when it comes time to actually saying, "We want a device," that's where the community started to separate the last time. And we couldn't come to an agreement. And so this actually provides a very good opportunity for the city and the community, not just in this area, but citywide, to understand how these devices function and how well they work.
I so appreciate this approach, Sheldon. I think this is a much better approach.
That, I'm going to let Kurt respond to your other questions.
The tough questions.
So, yeah, I get Sheldon Lee's new, the tough questions. So that's, I guess it's backing up a half a step here into the comments about study and implementation. Appreciating that we have studied things for a long time, probably way too long. And fundamentally, this is different. It's an implementation, it's the first step to permanent traffic calming devices in Old Town. So, and to your point, Councilmember Polly, we don't, we're not coming in here, we don't live in this neighborhood, I don't live in this neighborhood, have a lot of experience in traffic calming. I know a lot about the various devices. But I don't really, I'm not coming in here and telling you all what is the best solution for your particular street. Which so, it's purposeful that we have a variety of devices. Now, we'll certainly take your input about consolidating the devices and maybe does it make more sense to have similar devices on certain streets? And to make it more uniform? This is really good input that we're getting. And we'll look at this before we have, we actually put these devices on the ground. I think the Sixth comments are a point well taken. I think that's something that we certainly have enough devices here. And we have funding that we can move a device or two around and address your concerns about Sixth. I don't think that's an issue. I'm going to have to look into, to get you a better answer on that blocking the alley part. I'm going to have to look into that a little bit more. So I have a better answer for you. But we'll certainly look at that. So, and as far as the different devices and why are there so many different devices? We think that each device has its pros and cons. And so part of it, to your point about, well, we have speed data and volumes associated with each device, probably not. We will have, generally be able to tell you what speeds and volumes are on the various streets. Probably won't be able to correlate that one-on-one with the device. But we will know that, let's just use Bush for example, that four devices on Bush were able to reduce the speeds and volumes by X amount. The other part of the devices though is, it's not just about the numbers. It's not just about the counts and the speeds and the volumes. You all are playing an important part here. You all live in the neighborhood. You all are going to be driving over these devices daily. And so part of the reason to have the different devices is, I mentioned this peak democracy tool. We really want to encourage you to weigh in on which of these devices are working, which are really a pain to drive over, which actually you feel are effective. And our plan, as John mentioned earlier, when we come back to the council in spring after we have more information, is to have an open discussion about these devices, what the ones that we think are working, the ones that we've heard from you all that are worth moving forward with. And to your point, Jenny, there, nothing's going away here. We're, our plan with council approval is to move from an implement, a pilot program to a final program. And possibly leave these devices in place until the final ones are installed. So there, and the scenario we've been talking about most recently, Sheldon and I were just talking about this today, is that we would not be coming in and removing. There wouldn't be a downtime when you wouldn't have traffic calming. Unless there's, I guess the one caveat there is if there's something there that really is not working for anybody and is really causing a lot of discomfort and aggravation to you all, then that's probably something that would come out. So, does that get to your questions? And then, I don't know, the bagging the signs, I'm not, I am not personally wedded to that one way or another. I can explain the logic, which I think Billy did a great job of that. It's, we've heard from many of you that the signs aren't effective. And we would like, and what we've heard is that you would like effective traffic calming in your neighborhood, which we believe would be most effective with permanent devices that, just putting the enforcement question aside for a second, wouldn't need enforcement. They'd be self-enforcing in that way. So the signs require enforcement. So we don't, and we've heard that they're not enforced and they're not respected. So that's the thinking behind bagging the signs. And so, you know, it's really good input from all of you, whether that's complicating things or making it more simple. But that's the logic behind our proposal to bag the signs. That's all I have for now.
The number of devices, perhaps location is a variable. But, and maybe refined. Do you have this number because you think this might be a prototype of, at least location-wise and number-wise of the number of devices? Or is this just, let's scatter shot a bunch out there and see what people think? Or is this like, you know, we probably, we're thinking four on Bush and three on Andrew? But now let's get, let's get community input on which ones are preferred. And I'm going to use that word preferred because they all work to varying degrees in different ways, but the people have to live with them. I want to know from the raw data that we get, but plus their own preferences. I think I'll have a big input. But is that the case? Is it four on Bush because we think it's going to be four on Bush?
So the, and John can step in here too. So as far as, as far as the number and the location of the devices, those are based both on where we saw the highest volumes and speeds, so from that data. And it's also based, we had a, as I mentioned earlier, we had a great turnout in August, end of August. And we had actually maps of, three or four maps of the neighborhood. We had a lot of stickies and a lot of comments on, put some, put a traffic circle here. We need a speed hump here. And so loosely, although this is, there's not a one-to-one correlation between that workshop and what you see here, there's generally a correlation between where these devices are located and what we heard from the community back in August.
Okay. So the question I wondered if you were going to try to answer would be, if someone said, "Okay, I look at Andrews, I got three, four different devices, excuse me, on Bush. And, you know, we don't know what's going to happen, what the final solution is going to look like. But we know that it's likely to be four devices in approximately this location." But it sounds like, maybe not. This is just really based upon, this is more, you're not really trialing the final locations in your mind yet, to find out what type of fine tuning. See what I'm saying? Can you answer the question? That we're going to, in this pilot, we're going to put four devices on Bush because we think they need four devices on Bush. And I'll say one other thing too, is as soon as you put a control at one place, if you had performance on that roadway before, it's absolutely going to change. And then it'll change, the whole system will change. And so anyway, the first question is one I'm most interested in.
So, tell me that question one more time.
Can I look at Bush, for example, and say, you know, I think this is, we're looking at potentially four devices on Bush?
Correct.
That's why we have four devices on Bush?
So I think I can take a shot at answering this one.
Sure.
So the way we went about laying it out is, we said, without knowing how it's going to function, how we thought it was best to design within the budget we had. So we had a few more devices, like between Second and Third on Alder, we had one that got eliminated when we started putting together engineer's estimate. And we originally had something on Sixth as well that was eliminated from the budget. And so the, I guess, the general design philosophy was, let's take our best shot at it and then implement it and see how it works. And then from there, we'll have a lot of good data in order to adjust and make a better final solution for traffic calming in Old Town.
Okay. Thank you for that answer. That's what I was wondering. With the information you have and the objectives we are trying to achieve, you know, this is your, what you think is your best shot at it. And now let's, but it's a pilot. And we're not locked in it. We're pouring some concrete, extruding some stuff, but it's all movable and doing it.
Right.
Okay. Thank you for that. I would plus one, something on Sixth. I don't know where the right location, I'm not going to tell you where I think that right location is. But, and I'm glad to hear that you heard that and you knew that. And so the data must have suggested something to you. But you had to work within the constraints that you had.
Right.
I understand that.
Yeah.
And same with the other location, between Second, Third, Third on Alder. Thank you for mentioning that. One question I have is, you haven't said this yet about the bagging the signs. If you look at this, I see a network. And generally, there's constraints and there's primary purposes and roles that each one of these segments play. But we, how much of just trying to optimize this network is part of it? Is, especially when it comes to the, is the sign removal part of that as well? I really liked your answer, you know. And I've heard a lot of that as well. We know about that it's not, they don't work, they're not being enforced. Okay, a permanent solution would be self-enforcing. There's a benefit to the, if they actually do work, especially with speeds. And there's a benefit to the residents because they don't have the turn restrictions anymore. And we're not criminalizing people turning left, you know, to get to their home. But is it, what about this is optimizing the network? Overall performance throughput? In that terms? Did you take that kind of a look at it?
So, I don't know.
Did you model traffic flows?
No.
No.
Okay. So I don't, and I was, I mean, the other answer to that is, I don't think that it's, we're not looking at, in that, at that level. We're looking at, looking at from the community benefit, from the neighborhood benefit. And what things can we do out there that, right away, that will have real benefits to the community? And it's a pilot. So we're going to see. We're going to see what the neighborhood says. We're going to see what the data says. But, I mean, to your question, is it, are we doing a more of a scientific traffic modeling effort? Here, the answer is no.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. That's, I appreciate the answer. That's all that I have.
I think you heard all those comments and the one that I'll agree with on Sixth to look at there. I think you heard that very clearly. The thing that I'd be interested in, one of the questions was, is this for the preference of the neighborhood or the preference of the drivers driving through the neighborhood? In my mind, it's for the preference of the neighborhood. That's, we're the ones that are living with that. So, you know, the drivers may get on that peak democracy and put their comments in too. That's not to say that they are not welcome to. But what I'm trying to feel with this, and I'm trying to be as open as I can be to this too, you know, the left turn signs went up and I hated them. But they worked in the beginning because they were enforced. And over time, they kind of, a little less. And then it was like, once a year. Well, you didn't want to take that chance, even for once a year, you know, kind of you didn't take the turn, right? And then when it became no times per year, then everybody's just totally disregarded them. So that's been an enforcement issue or lack thereof over the years that's created that. And as one of you mentioned, if you take the signs down, I think the most dramatic effect is going to be on the north side of Sunset. Because we may find that there's no problem on the north side because people really are trying to cut through to the south. The north is just an alternate route that's out of your way. So if you're out of there, that might change the north end quite a bit. I don't know that, I'm just.
It's a pre-right turn.
Yeah. So it's just kind of conjecture on what's going to happen, we don't know. That's where the data is going to come out and tell us a little bit. And then I think, you know, there's some different ways of doing things. But I'm going to want to feel, how do these feel to me? That speed hump versus a speed table versus the chicane? As I have to live with that every day. I don't want to be limited to not be able to turn to my neighborhood and then have to deal with the common measures as well, as a double whammy. So now I've got to go the long way and then I still have to drive over all these things. You know, it's like, I'm really getting hit there. It feels like, as a neighborhood, getting hit with both things. I can't get home and then I have to go, you know, deal with that as well. So that's kind of one side of thinking of getting rid of the signs. So we're doing, we're feeling the effects of one versus the other. Because hopefully, if something works, we can get rid of the signs so I can get home in the most direct route. It's all about me, sorry. So anyway, that's my thoughts on that too. You know, the different devices, you know, whether we did them, you know, a little more similar. I will say, I had conversations. We had a lot more uniform devices when we first thought of this. And it was my push to say, I want to feel different devices so we all get a chance to feel those differences and know what it's about, whether we feel like one's more comfortable that I want in my neighborhood. And I can live with much better than another one. So that was my push to try to, to try more different things so we got a better feel for that from the neighborhood standpoint. Not from the outsider standpoint. So that's my last comments. Anything else? If not, go ahead.
Not to beat the horse on, the dead horse on the signs. But I think it would be helpful for us to leave with some clear direction of where we're going on that. I'm not, I'm not trying to sell the bagging. So I guess a couple of things. We're not removing the signs, we're not taking the signs down. What we mean by bagging the signs is literally putting, covering the signs with a bag and wire tying them off so they wouldn't, they would not be enforced. You wouldn't see them, the signs would still be there, could take the bags off. So, but to be very clear, it's certainly not our intent, as one gentleman said, to send a bunch of, to open the gates, so to speak, and send a bunch of traffic into the neighborhoods, north and south of Sunset. That is the farthest thing from what we're trying to do here. And we're not trying to experiment with your neighborhood in any way. But we, again, I think I've mentioned this earlier, we have heard that the signs are problematic and not very effective and not enforced. And so we would like, the idea of bagging the signs would be to take them out of the equation so that we could know for sure that what we're proposing here either is effective or it's not. So again, not trying to sell you all one way or another on the signs. But I think it would be useful if we could come up with some kind of a, an understanding of what we're doing here before we move forward on this.
Sure. So can we each comment on that then?
Please.
So I think the signs should be removed from the equation if we have something that happens on Sixth, which is what you heard about tonight. And also, I think there needs to be some, so no longer is it illegal to turn or the threat that you could be ticketed. But I think they need to know that there's a heads up that something else changed in the neighborhood. And that's where I was talking about, Rita Bore signs or something. Not using the word traffic calming, but something that the people understand. Could be speed-controlled neighborhood, it could be whatever. But they need a heads up that if they turn in, they're going to experience something so that they can make that choice or not make that choice. So I think the signs should be bagged as long as you do those two things.
Great. I live there, okay. So I will second that. I would like to try it that way, from my standpoint of Sixth. And try it without, I think that gives us a different view because I think it would be leaving the signs there. There's still some people that don't, that obey the signs because they just do because they don't want to take that chance. Or if they're a council member, they don't want to get a ticket turning in their own neighborhood, for sure. So, you know, so I think there's still quite a few that do. Otherwise, everybody would be going through the neighborhood and there's still a lot of traffic on Sunset. So, you know, but enforcement has been the lack thereof for those that know about it. So I'm seconding that same thing from my point of view.
I have another question. Let's just go in. So you want to bag the signs, what are you going to put there temporarily? Nothing?
We would bag the signs, they would be covered, he wouldn't sit.
Bag, I understand that. But what are you going to put there to let people know we're trying to calming traffic neighborhood now? You going to put a neon sign up or something, flashing sign saying, "Traffic calming?" Or, I don't understand.
So that's, right. So hang on a second. Hang on, I got to keep some control here. So we had public comment and we start talking all around the audience here, we're going to have difficulty. Right. So, I'm going to try to answer it because, Mary Lou, you brought that up and basically, how are we going to do that? So the request was somehow, we haven't said how yet. So the, the request was somehow, we haven't said how yet, but, because that's a request to you, to let the folks know if they turn off Sunset, they're turning into something different than what they used to know. So that's something we're requesting of you to come up with, not the, the detail of how yet. You're not gonna design that here on the table, but you're gonna let folks know somehow you're turning into something different. And if you choose to do that, that, that's their choice, right? And then we're gonna deal with that. So that's kind of the request here from at least the two of us to, to say, warning, something on Sixth.
Yes.
Okay, and, and go from there, all right? And, Paul, do you have something to say?
Two things quickly, let's not miss the comment. Could someone, um, there was a chicane, there was a ballard and there no longer is one on Third Avenue Bridge. That's actually being used illegally. I don't know if that's an enforcement issue or there's an engineering fix to that. It would be good to look into that. And I, and I, with all due respect, I mean, I hear, I've noted everybody who spoke and whether you wanted the turning restrictions retained or not. And that is, that is, that is a more difficult one to, it's not as clear cut to me about that. But the, um, my first choice would have been to remove them during this test as well. But if there was, if, and you've made a passionate argument, why, from your perspective? If you'd have been anymore, if, if you could have gone either way, I would have said keep them because that's what the people, most of the people asked for. But, but I'm, I'm gonna say that this evening, I am, I do believe that for the long term, you know, best result, removing the restrictions during this test. I mean, if we can have something where we're not making criminalizing turning for people who live there and we have a safe neighborhood, then for the roadways, for all users, then that's a win.
All right, so, and I'm gonna do something unique here. So, um, just, hold off, because I'm the chair, so I get to do this. So, so normally, just, you know, normally we do public comment, we wrap it up and it's done. But I have the feeling there's a few more folks in the audience would like to say something again. So I'm going to let them say something again. I'm gonna open it back up to audience comments. You've heard our discussion afterwards. So if you'd like to step up and say something about that or something you forgot to say, we'll try to do this and not be too late tonight.
I'll just be really quick. I hope that you know there's a childcare, there's a daycare on Sixth Avenue. Little kids all the time, so just another plug for Sixth Avenue.
Thank you.
And this was never spoken about at the August 31st meeting when you had several people, even though that was a holiday weekend, like this time, many people are out at Christmas. There was nothing asked about removing signs. So you're taking a few people here that have already said, no, we haven't heard any, take them away, except from you guys. How do you know they haven't worked? We've told you we have a lot of traffic. Yes, how many people go down our streets and how many stay on Sunset? So don't say they don't work. There's a lot on Sunset coming up to the light, going home, that aren't coming down our streets. So why would you open it up and let more people saying it's okay? None of us are complaining that we're worried about to get a ticket, are we? Did you hear any of that? No. So you're opening it up, we see it as a way, just another way to alleviate some of your problems off of Sunset Way. So it's not backed up to Dorset and Highlands and they can just go a little slower down our roads. They might not as go as fast, but we're gonna see one after another cars bumpa-dee, 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 bumpa-dee. Won't be your problem, will it?
Thank you, Jenny.
I'm kinda confused about the whole sign issue. I thought that getting the signs was like a huge undertaking to even get them there. I, I don't remember, we were concerned about traffic in the beginning and the whole solution in calming the traffic was to have those signs and have, um, have people not turning. And I think, I think they've been as effective as possible as they can with our huge growth. I mean, I, I am amazed that we don't have bumper-to-bumper traffic on Bush and on, on Alder and on all these streets because of the sheer volume. And depending on what accident happens where, it gets even more and worse. So I think they're super effective for as little enforcing as they get for controlling. Because now we're gonna create another issue, we're gonna create an issue of volume. So now we're not only dealing with speed, we're dealing with volume and we're dealing with all this volume trying to get onto Second. And so we, we're creating a whole nother issue. And I think we've just got this light in, we need to test this light out through a whole school year. We have, school times change all the time with all the difference ins and outs. And that affects that light and that affects our commuting traffic. So you've got schools and commuters commuting at the same time and hitting at all different times. So you've got all this volume, you've got all these new schools coming up. You don't know what the patterns are gonna be. So I think we need to really take some time, leave the signs. We know they're working as best as they can with what we have. Leave those, let the light work, see how all this comes together and slow down the speed. Take it one step at a time, don't spend all this money and not know where we're at. We're gonna get skewed data. We already don't know how the light, the brand-new light has affected us. I mean, really, what is, what is that light doing? It's, is it creating problems, is it helping us? It's brand-new, we haven't had a year with it. And then, you know, you're, you're making all these changes at once, we need to be effective. And we know the signs work to the best they can right now. As it's, you know, let's keep the volume level low, solve the speed and then we can deal with the volume after that. But if you take the signs down, you're just opening up a whole nother issue. Now we're gonna have volume on the streets. Now it's bumper-to-bumper traffic at peak time. You've got lines of cars on these side streets, you don't know. Has it affected speed or not, or is it just because they can't get on Second now at peak times? You won't know what your, if your data's good or not. So you kinda have to do one at a time and see, see where it is. But those two will affect each other too much. You're not gonna know how, how speed is affected once you alleviate those signs.
Thank you.
I, I wish my other citizens had stayed. So it's all of our Sunset, it's all of our Highlands, it's all of our neighborhoods. So, like, thank you for very, very much for taking the time to do this. I feel that we've been heard over the last couple of years, absolutely. I would ask, you know, I go back and forth now on the signs. I was emotionally very much against them a little while ago because I felt like it was changing the variables in the equation, right? It, it went, you were adding another sort of dependent variable. So to me, that's an engineering and a science problem to go figure out. I think we all have the same interests in mind. But I now think that I'm in favor of bagging the signs simply because the ideal long-term scenario is no signs and no speed and no volume and all of those things together, right? And what if we put a solution in place that was this, that worked awesome and the signs were bagged? Like, I mean, wouldn't that be everybody's dream scenario? If we don't bag the signs and we put a solution like this in place, we'll only know that it works for the current volume. We won't know that it's actually a passive deterrent for potential future volume, which we're trying to avoid also. So that's, I, I appreciate hearing that. But again, thank you, thank you guys. I'm sorry you have to sit and listen to anger at times, even though it's your house and we elected you to do this.
Thank you, Jim.
I just, I just wanna add this into the sign conflict. There's a sign on Sixth Avenue that says no left turn from seven to nine in the morning. And I think that's to address the high school kids. Okay, on Alder, we see very little traffic in the morning. And I think that sign may be effective. But then in the evening, there's a ton of traffic because they come down off the hill, they take a right and it's a free right, you don't have to cross traffic. They come down Alder screeching and then turn onto Second. I've had somebody pass me on Alder because I was going, I was going 20 miles an hour, but I did it intentionally, but they passed me because they were angry and they wanted to get down to Second Avenue. And so anyway, that's, I don't know how to think about the signs, you know, but it does stop the morning traffic coming down, but it doesn't stop the afternoon traffic.
So I've been trying not to pay attention to something. So is it possible to begin without the signs bagged? And see if initially there is a speed deterrent for the cars that are there? And if that looks like it is successful in slowing things down and not creating other dangerous situations, then you could unbag the signs and see if then it deters the extra volume of traffic at the same time as you're slowing it down. Because if I lived in this place and all of the sudden you opened it up to potential future cut-through traffic, which I think the signs are annoying but effective, I could see you would be creating dangerous, a dangerous situation that would take a long time to fix and harm could be done to people in the neighborhood and potentially bad harm. So cautiousness, and it seems statistically or looking at the system like that would work. My brain might not be processing it appropriately. The other thing that I didn't hear is timing. How, how long do things stay in place? And what is the feedback loop? You were talking about using the website. But if you provide them all with a phone number so they could actually just call and describe the situation? Because not everybody uses the computer, but pretty much everybody can use the phone and, and can describe it more elegantly because someone will ask them the question of what are you talking about exactly? And you might be able to get a quicker turnaround to potentially hazardous or dangerous situations because you don't want anybody hurt. And so I think I'm, that, that short turnaround for problems might help alleviate some of the concerns.
Thank you.
Unusual to reopen this, but thank you. You've got a lot of data, which is kinda, and it's pretty darn good data and you can get new data pretty quick. So the possibility of having a sign, no sign comparison is there. February 19th is Monday and that's a week of vacation for Iskwa School District. So you got a, a no-school week in there or two that you can get some different data possibly from that. So there's some things that could happen here with the quality of the data and your ability to collect it.
Thank you, David. Does, does everybody feel heard? You sat here a long time, I wanna make sure you feel heard. You, you got, you got three hours committed here. If you're going for a sixth time, I'm, okay. Thank you very much. So, how are we here, Mary Lou and Paul?
Oh yeah, I'm really glad you reopened it. I thought that was really beneficial. And I'm good with questions and comments.
I just throw out to think about the idea, I kinda like that other one of, of not bagging the signs right away, but maybe waiting, you know, three or four weeks into it or something and, and then do it. So the people that are cutting that way are gonna find out what's going on and give a little, a slower impulse into that versus, sounds like a good idea to me. And still get some data. Okay, are we ready to wrap this up for tonight?
I would, and if tonight, or maybe if we need, if you guys need more time to, to sleep on it or something, but the suggestion of having, if you have enough time in a 10-week period to alternate signs on, signs off, turn restrictions on, turn restrictions off, I would like to hear kind of an engineer's assessment of that. Do you have one or you're gonna get back to us? You can get back to us.
Well, we'll get back to you for sure. I, I think that these are, I think we've heard, I've heard of a lot of good suggestions here. So certainly on Sixth, certainly how we sign, get the message.
I was only asking about the turning restrictions.
And I think the turning restriction, Connie's idea is certainly worth thinking about and we'll get back to you on that.
Thank you, thank you.
And then just the last thing, as David mentioned, I mentioned earlier is that we, this is definitely a covered time period when schools in and out with some breaks in between so that there'll be, you know, we can, we'll know that difference too of, because everybody was aware of that, the high school traffic. So that's definitely something that's in there. Okay, we've been at it a while here. We still have two more things to do. So, um, we have quite a bit of time set up for our update on Newport Way Maple Sunset project. You wanna go for that and then a project update or, or how you doing?
So, so we have, so we have Brienne here. She's, I think, ready to go and anxious to, to give you all an update on Newport Way. I think that your presentation is probably about 15 minutes at most. Her presentation may be 12 to 15 minutes.
Okay.
So we'll, so she's, she's ready to go and I think we could, she can get through her part fairly quickly and I think that will be back to you on questions. And so I would propose that we do that. So, so I'll just introduce Brienne here who's gonna talk about our Newport Way project. So we've been talking to you a lot about Newport Way east or west of 900. So this is the Newport Way from Maple to Sunset. This is a project we've been in the works for quite some time. This is a, we're, we're getting ready to start our final design on this project and we wanted to let council know where we're at on that and what our plan is going forward. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Brienne, who's gonna speak really fast here.
Super fast. All right, so Brienne Ross, Senior Transportation Engineer, Project Manager for this Newport project as well. So, we just wanted to give you guys a brief update on project history because this project is unique in that it has more, more history than most. So kinda give you an idea of where we're gonna start before we finalize our consultant scope and fee. So we are looking at Newport Way from Maple to Sunset, three roundabouts at Dogwood, Juniper and Holly. And you can see that we've got the Iskwa Valley Elementary School on the project as well as in the vicinity of the Transit Center and several parks. And to kinda talk a bit about project history, this started back in 2009 with, there were two open houses. At those open houses, they considered a three-lane alternative with signalized intersections and two-lane alternative with roundabout intersections. And out of those two public meetings, the recommendation was for the two-lane alternative with roundabout intersections. After that public meeting, it went into council, there was an agenda bill. And it stayed in that version of CIC, the CTC back then, for about a year where they considered several alternatives, looked at traffic modeling in more depth and came up with the council adopted corridor concept in January of 2011. So you can see where we're at now at that red line. We're starting this design process, not necessarily at the beginning of our public engagement continuum because there's already been several years worth of work done with some process there. And we're starting, but we are in that consult area, not necessarily that share area because there is some things that, that we want to take another look at and, and will continue to communicate with the public on. So this was the alternatives that they discovered, that they evaluated, sorry, pulled out of old, oh. Yeah, see, they looked at alternatives. Sorry about that. So they looked at roundabouts at all intersections. They looked at medians providing access control, so making a right turn, right in and right out only, prohibiting any left turns. They looked at no access control. They looked at signals at Holly and Dogwood and a roundabout at Juniper. Point is, they looked at a lot of things. And this is what they ended up with. So they determined that there should be roundabouts at the intersections of Juniper, Holly and Dogwood, that there would be no medians on the corridor and that there should be a second southbound lane to extend south of the roundabout at Holly. So the other thing that they determined at council was to have bike lanes for both. directions, sidewalk on the west side, shared used path on the east side and landscape So that was in 2011. And then in 2012, we adopted the central Isiqua Plan, which identified Newport Way as a parkway, which adds medians. So right now we have this working cross section and we do need to kind of resolve that center median discrepancy and I would, that to me is a technical decision based on critical areas, topography, available right of way, but also driveways and neighborhood access. So that's something that we'll, we'll look at resolving as we start to design. Yeah.
You didn't mention safety and I'm thinking in the other piece of Newport, the Eastside Fire and Rescue and Police had a, had a big piece in deciding about the center median and big points, so same, same approach here?
Yes. So, so I've, I've already sent out this, the current concept to Eastside Fire and Rescue, Police and all the various city departments and have a meeting scheduled with them after the holidays to hear their input on where they're coming from. So we already know that there's some proponents for medians and there's going to be some people against the medians within our own city, within Eastside Fire and Rescue, Police, Maintenance, et cetera. So everyone has their own angle that they're coming at it from.
So let me clarify a question because what, what I heard you say was that the decision was no medians and then because of central Isiqua Plan, you're considering medians back in there maybe if they fit because you have enough whiff or tech, you said it was a technical question, I mean, medians not a, a policy question versus, versus central Isiqua Plan being more of a, I feel that is a technical question. So that's why I'm asking what, what's really the driver there?
So there's, there's many driveways.
Not driveways, just the driver, what's, what's causing that?
Right, no, but there are many driveways and so how we address the access of those driveways. So as I said previously, medians were at one point considered because they were going to prohibit any left turns and then use the roundabout for, for U-turn opportunities. To me, we need to look at how we address neighborhood access on and off of Newport, if, if left turns are prohibited or, or not, and medians play into what function that might have. Also if we need to have a two-way left turn lane or, or left turn lanes. So for example, on the other Newport, we used medians to break up those left turn lanes. That serves a, a good function there. And so that's where I, I'm coming from, that it's evaluating critical areas, steep, you know, we know that we have steep hillsides, so what space we have horizontally, but also looking at what that access looks like.
Okay, I, I hear that, but that's why I'm confused. Is it a policy decision or a technical decision whether you have medians or not?
So it's a, so it's both. Honestly, it's, it's the technical part of whether to have medians or not is, as Brianne said, is access control and deciding where we want to allow people to turn out of driveways or do we want to make them go down a, a roundabout to make a, a U-turn around the roundabout? It's, that's, those are safety and engineering issues and they're also policy issues because we were talking about access along this corridor. The one thing that is quite a bit different on this corridor versus the other Newport is there's relatively few access points on, on the Newport west of 900 and there's a lot of driveways on this. So it's going to be a, it's going to be a policy and an, so we can give you the engineering solution and it would be generally it's safer to limit access points, but the policy question is to what degree do you, do we want to do that? Does that help?
Okay, so that, so it's, it's an open-ended question right now with those, that, that major decision.
Correct. And then the other thing, Sheldon can speak to this, I think, better than, than we can because we weren't, neither one of us were here. But the, the part that's, as we're going back through this, as Brianne mentioned, there's, there's been, this has been an evolving discussion on this corridor. So we started out with no medians and the, and the alternatives that Brianne presented and now we've got a central, we're looking at a central Isiqua Plan that shows medians. And so a lot of the work here is going to be working through that and having those hard conversations to decide what we all want to do along this corridor, what we as a community want to, how we want to design this corridor.
Okay, thank you.
Could you go back one slide? Did you update the existing conditions, the drawn portion of it and put ditches on each side of the road, please?
Sure.
Because they're there.
Yeah, absolutely they are. Yeah, no problem. Okay, so.
I'd like to add a little bit of what Kurt was saying in your question about the medians, policy, technical questions. Kurt's absolutely right when he speaks about the safety and operations and the number of access points that are along Newport. A little bit of history because I was around back then is that one of the considerations for the council's action on the current concept was no medians because there were so many access points and didn't want to force people to drive to the next street to make the U-turn to come back around. The community had a lot of comments on that, but then along came the central Isiqua Plan and a policy direction was given to make it a parkway which has a median down the middle of it. So now we're in this place again where we're going to revisit that because we have a later policy decision by the city council saying, now let's look at this from a parkway perspective and we should reevaluate all the safety and operations along that corridor in combination with, we also know that there's some change in land uses that are happening that were not previously known back in 2010 and 28. And so, you know, as we start to look at the whole picture again, and Brianne will talk a little bit more about the further evaluations we have to do on the project as we move forward with design, but it's all going to have to be looked at again from that perspective. So yes, it is a policy as well as it's a safety and operational issue too that we have to look at.
Bill, can I just add to that? So Sheldon, the piece of Newport Way that is west of 900 has central Isiqua on one side and suburban family on the other. And this piece of Newport is the same in that there's a parcel here or there on, on the south side of Newport that will be in the urban area, but then there's a lot that's not going to be in it. And so along that whole length, that whole length of corridor is not in or out of central Isiqua, it's both. And sometimes one side is, one side isn't, sometimes one piece is. And, and we're also talking about right now, council is, the boundaries of central Isiqua, what's designated as central Isiqua now, which goes to.
Holly.
Holly. And we're talking about that area saying maybe it ends at Juniper. And so I guess in coming back with it, it would be great to hear rationale as to how you do design that quarter, taking into account part of its urban and part of it is not going to be urban for a very long time. So it's going to get curb and gutter, but this type of development on either side of it's just not going to be urban. That would be, not for tonight, but when you come back, just putting it in that context of pieces are urban and pieces are not.
That, that's a great point. And that is one of the issues is how do you transition?
Right.
And so that is, you're, you're absolutely right.
So the other piece I wanted to say here is that, you know, looking at, we are looking at retaining the, the design elements that were decided in 2011, being the bike facilities, the sidewalk, the shared use path and landscape between the bike lane and the path. So we've, we need additional work here. There is some changes that are happening with the proposed middle school. We have a better understanding of some regional and local traffic and development has changed because like I said, this was passed, or this was adopted before central Isiqua Plan. So as far as development activity goes, the red parcel is the Inniswood parcel and that's currently in for permits and active development. We know that those blue parcels have come in for feasibility and/or just had direct conversations about potentials for redevelopment and then those are expressing interest in development. And then those yellow parcels are not necessarily property owners that we've heard from yet, but that we've identified have certainly potential to be redeveloped. So in comparing the other Newport, we are really looking at trying to stay ahead of what can be a heavily developed corridor in the future.
Brianne, can you go back to that slide for a second? Is the, good question. The large green section that's on the whatever side, it's down from Morgans Ridge, on the west side. I didn't know that was city owned. I actually thought that was native growth protection easement associated with the development above. That's just a question. I didn't think that was city owned.
So I can tell you that in our GIS system, it says it's city owned. I don't know, I don't know anything beyond that.
Okay.
Okay. And maybe it's, maybe it's an easement or something along those lines, I'm not, I'm not sure. Okay, so we absolutely need to update the traffic model as, as the first order of business with this project. Not only have we done the, we've done the Isiqua Hobart Road Study, which has given us some additional information as far as traffic patterns go there. We want to design out to a 2040 design year, but also in addition to that, we also want to consider those school peak hour and their potential access points on the corridor. And we believe the goal would be to design a roadway that improves the multimodal connections and supports the character, neighborhood character and the residents, but also accommodates the adjacent land use, knowing that we have big changes in that department. So you've seen this before, I think, from the Isiqua Hobart Road Study. I think that it's, it's beneficial to note that in the morning, we get about 10% regional traffic going northbound on Newport. And that in the evening, we get about 20% or 26% of our regional traffic coming southbound on Newport. So I know that I have heard questions about why, why additional southbound lane, why not two lanes in each direction? I think this actually helps speak to that when that modeling was done in 2010. I anticipate they must have been seeing some of these same types of results.
A question on that, if you could go back to that figure. So the, there's definitely, I mean, the, the data speaks to reality, definitely it's more of a evening route. What is the, what is the rationale for city taxpayer dollars to put a second lane south for regional traffic? Why, why should that be paid for by the citizens of Isiqua?
So I'm going to jump in there just because that's a difficult, that's an excellent question, it's a difficult question. And I think, Brianne, if you could go back just a couple slides there to your, yeah. So I think what you're, what you're getting to is the second bullet there and that is the question. And so that is a, a key question that I think first of all, first of all, I think we're going to want to get the data. So we have data from the Isiqua Hobart Road Study, it shows the numbers that Brianne just put up there. I think one of the first orders of business is going to be detailed traffic modeling so we can understand actually what we're looking at here. And then the next question I think is, is really more of a policy question as to, easy for us to put a bullet up there that says supports a blend or a balance of regional local trips. You know, we struggled on this, on the other Newport project as well and has a regional function and has a, it's a local neighborhood corridor for that, for all the folks that live either on or adjacent to that corridor or nearby. And so when you ask questions like, you know, what's the role of Isiqua taxpayers in a project like that, I don't, I don't know if I have the answer right yet, but it's certainly a policy question that we'll need to wrestle with throughout this project.
And that's fine. I just raised it as a question, I don't need an answer.
Yeah. So I'm going to add a little bit more to that. It is a great question and I think it's also one of the reasons why we've been successful in obtaining over $5 million so far in federal money for this project because I think in part it's recognized not just as a local project. PSRC has given us like 1.85 million and we have an earmark from the federal government from a different project that was specifically for regional traffic on the order of like 3.6 or something like that million. So, you know, it's already recognized as, you know, this isn't totally a local project financially.
So Sheldon, just to follow up on that, this project though doesn't include the bridge widening, does it, south of Sunset?
That's correct, it does not.
Okay, so how does that take into account the capacity numbers that we're talking about? Like can it really function as an improved regional route if we don't add capacity at the bridge?
Yeah, I was just talking about the Newport Way Clark Street Bridge, right? Right there at Wildwood? Yeah, I believe that bridge is wide enough to stripe it for four lanes if you need to.
So it fits in with.
We built that like a little extra wide. I don't, I don't believe it does because I believe it's wide enough for four lanes of traffic. It is four today, so yeah.
Okay, so moving forward, like I said, we, we want to retain those multimodal elements that were identified in 2011 and carry those forward in design. We also want to reevaluate some things like lane configuration. There is that added second southbound lane that was identified to terminate somewhere south of Holly and that was what the traffic model of that time showed was an appropriate setup. And so that's something that we need to dig into and confirm if that's still appropriate. As I mentioned, we also need to reevaluate the, the center median aspect as well as confirming that the intersection controls of the roundabouts are the appropriate method of intersection control. So the way that we're looking at this is that we have this concept that was identified in 2011. We know there's things that have changed and the first order of work is, is to really look at the data to determine if that concept that was identified then is still valid, if that works. So we've had a lot of conversations about what a corridor concept is and what's to be determined in final design. This is just a reminder that there's a lot of design work to be done going forward. And so in looking at a proposed public engagement approach, our goal is, is to gather meaningful and effective feedback, but at an appropriate time. So at this point, we've got some work to do. We need to have a better understanding of what that new middle school is going to look like and what their conceptual designs are as far as accessing Newport Way or Holly Street. We need to have a better understanding of the traffic model and what that looks like today versus 2010. And we will, after we get a little better handle on those items, be going out to the public. We will set up the city's website so people start to become aware of the project. In spring, we'll introduce the project. At that point, it may be somewhat to the level that we've got here tonight. Hopefully we have a little more detail at that point. But after we've done our homework as far as, as looking at that traffic and looking at the data that we've got, then we also anticipate there'll be three topics that will warrant some more in-depth conversation with the public, specifically talking around traffic. Like we've already started to talk about what does that look like? Talking about what does the middle school, new middle school look like and how does that affect the corridor? And then also, as I mentioned, you know, this originally was done before the central Isiqua Plan. So there's, there's lots of developments that are, well, there's Inniswood which is active and then several other developments in the area that are active and then on the corridor itself, certainly some that are interested that may be starting to move forward. So our next steps.
Go Hawks.
Right?
I was trying to figure out why you put the picture. You didn't have another picture.
Right. So we've, we've selected the consultant, we're currently working on the scope and fee for them and establishing a project schedule. And then we've, like I've mentioned, we're starting some project kickoff meetings internally to float out this concept that we've had with, with the various departments and emergency services to get their initial reactions on. services to get their initial reactions on, on this first concept that was, that was adopted in 2011. And that's where we're at.
So the one question I have then is, as you look at this and the decision back then was three roundabouts were the right thing, we're now going to add a whole lot of volume, particularly about new school and so forth. And then I assume you'll look at warrants and so forth to see if that would then upgrade those to, you know, some other type of intersection, particularly if you have two schools going in and out of one street, that's going to be a pretty high volume of traffic. And, and that, those also going through development, those would be contributing to their traffic port to that too. So they would, would be paying into that pot to help for that too, right?
Right. So yeah, we would be looking at the traffic model and, and determining, like I said, if, if the roundabouts still work as the appropriate method, or if there's something else that, that would be better suited to the corridor.
Is that it? We're good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you wait late enough, we have less questions. Thank you. All right. We're going to kick very quickly to our last item, which is project updates, correct? And you have beautiful pictures to show us, I'm sure, no?
That's correct. Actually, I'm going to have John Mortensen come up because there's, you know, while you've got the list of project updates and everything, we thought it'd be good at this time to give you guys a little bit higher level, more detailed level look at the Southeast 62nd Project. And so John's got a quick presentation that he'll give you a brief overview of the project, a little bit, you know, kind of what is the project, where we are now, and with some pictures up. So then we can, you can ask questions if you want.
And as Sheldon mentioned, I'm going to give a little update on the Southeast 62nd Street Project. So we're going to talk about, I'm going to talk about just project overview, just a brief description of what it is we're building, just to remind you guys, since it's been a while since we've had a presentation on it. Talk about the construction status. Good news, we are on schedule and within budget right now and with the project. Timing wise, when we get done with the project, it's going to be right around the time when Costco's going to want to break ground on their corporate headquarters expansion. And so we've been doing a lot of coordinating with them to make sure the details of our project match up with what they are trying to build. And then I'm going to touch on the question that I probably get asked more than any other question, which is, why does it take so long to build it? All right. So here's a aerial view of what we are building. And as I talked about the project, I'm going to break it up into thirds. So we've got the west third, which is Lake Drive and 62nd from the roundabout in that vicinity over to the bridge. Then I'm going to talk about the bridge. And finally, I will talk about the east side with the roundabout over there. And that's where I'll also touch on why it takes so long to build the project. So we've been under construction since March, and right now on the west end of the project, we've been working in the vicinity of that roundabout and 62nd from just west of that roundabout over to the bridge. And so first, we've built the preload on that side, which I'm going to talk more about the preload process on the east side. And we've installed the underground utilities in that vicinity. And we're currently in the process of installing the curb. And right now, for phasing wise, we're staying in that vicinity because for Costco, it's very important for their employees to not have construction traffic and delays during their holiday season as they're trying to coordinate all the activities that their stores around the world to, for the holiday shopping season. On the bridge, we have built the, installed the bridge piles, which are for the foundation that the bridge will be built on, and installed the pier caps that go on top. The picture on the right there, that is one of the girders for our project. They're being made, or they've been made down in Tacoma Concrete Technologies. So we went down and took a look at it, so that girder will be on the bridge. And then on January 8th, the contractor is going to begin installing the girders. So it's going to really start looking like a bridge then. And I just realized I forgot to go over something, so I'm going to backtrack. And so this is a time-lapse video showing the work that we've got going on. Oops. Oops. Sorry about that. Now, if you go to the city's website, on the west side where we're building the roundabout, we also have another time-lapse video that you can watch and track that action. All right. And over on the east side of the project, we have relocated the North Fork of the, of Issaquah Creek, and we're in the process, and yeah, we're in the process of also doing a lot of restoration work to try and restore a lot of the habitat for the aquatic life, wildlife and the North Fork. And we have been building what I call the preload, which is the fill material to raise the road grade up. And so right here, we've got a, this is the project schedule. And as we look at it, I kind of, I simplified it and I just said everything over on the west end of the project, I just put into one line. And then I'm going to walk you through the steps on the east side of the project, starting with the installation of the 61st Street Bridge and the creek restoration. Because as you walk through the different steps on this side of the project, it shows you just each step you have to take in order to, I guess, why it takes 18 months to build And so here's a zoomed in picture on the, of that aerial photo for the east side of the project. And so the first thing that they ended up having to do is, is to get access to the east side of the creek. So that meant installing the 61st Street Bridge, so I've got it number one there. And it meant building an access road all the way around to basically right underneath where our new bridge is going to be. And once that was done, then the second part of the project that we needed to do was to relocate the North Fork of Issaquah Creek, so that way we could build our preload to raise the road grade up. And once we had the creek relocated, then we were able to demolish the Clark Towing Building, install the walls for the preload fill, and begin doing the preload fill. And so at the end of October, we got all the material placed, and right now we're in the, the settlement period. So we call it a preload because of the way the materials are out there, that when you put a bunch of weight on them, just over a period of about 90 days, it's going to sink six, eight, 10 inches, depending on where you're at. And so once we get it to settle, then that moves us on to the part where they can start installing the utilities, because we don't want to be installing the utilities and, while the ground is moving. And, but as I mentioned, on January 8th, our girders are coming in, so we need access to get the girders onto the bridge. So a lot of the utilities can't be done until after the girders are in place. We've got a little bit, like there's a stormwater vault on the east end of the project that we'll be able to start doing sooner rather than later. But once the girders are into place, then we can do the under, pedestrian underpass for the King County Trail and replacing the sewer line for the Smamish Water District. And then once we've got all that done, which should be around July 5th or so, then we can begin doing the road improvements that you'll be able to see, the curb gutter, sidewalk, pavement. And then that'll take us into next October when the project will be complete. And I guess at this point, I would like to offer up, if you guys are interested in site tours.
Yes.
That we'd be very happy to do that and.
View on Monday. I know.
If you guys have any questions.
I have one question, and it looked like the potential that the, the trail would be finished before the roundabout is finished. Does it mean the trail could actually open before the rounded, a roundabout is finished?
I've been asking about it and looking into it, and I don't have a definitive answer. My gut tells me we're better off, from a safety point of view, keeping the trail closed, but that is something that in the back of my mind, I've been looking at and asking questions.
It's not to ever compromise safety. I agree with you. That's number one, so close to a construction site. But the trail connection is so sorely missed right now.
Yes, it is.
Okay. That's great.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
You have a question?
Yes.
Are you willing to sign something that says it'll be done by next October? You just said, you just said next October. The sign out there still says early 2019.
So.
It's this guy's jab.
Yeah.
I know, but he just said it. Come on. Yes!
There still is a lot of stuff that could go wrong. And we're currently on pace to get it open. That being said, especially with doing that deep sewer line where we're replacing it for the Smamish Water District, that has me nervous because there's a lot of stuff that could go wrong anytime you're doing, installing a sewer that deep.
You're in the ground.
Yes. So I guess.
I just heard it. I want to.
All right. Thank you for that. I love pictures. It always helps. And video even. Do you have any other ones you want to highlight? Okay. If not, I have one question. Issaquah-Hobart Road Study, it says, you know, can, project recommendations were expected in December, and we're in December, so I'm wondering where they are.
So I think we're probably a month behind on that project. Our intent was to get the project wrapped up by the end of the year. I think we're shooting for early next year with project recommendations. We do have a short list of projects that we're working with a consultant to finalize. And from those projects, we'll also be coming up with some preliminary design work for that. So I'm anticipating, I will, what I will do is I will review that schedule tomorrow and confirm that time. But I'm, I think we're targeting for the, for early next year with a, to finalize that report. So we're, so we're a bit behind on that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other ones? You got questions on anybody? Another one I haven't gone by to see is the one over on Juniper, our last complete streets one, and I'm assuming that's sidewalk stuff. Yeah. And I haven't driven over there lately to check it out. It looks like it should be complete, pretty complete, pretty close.
The other night, I think it is.
Yeah. Okay. All right. I think everybody wants to get out of here. I don't think they have any more questions.
You got a public comment?
You got a public comment on, on, on the updates? Okay. Public comment on the updates.
Yeah.
He's got to walk me home. He can't go.
Yeah, that's right. My, my pet peeve is that tunnel, which is totally isolated, that the East Lake Smamish Trail will be in, 24 hours a day usage, and we got to have cameras in that thing. And so we got to make sure we're getting the conduit in to make sure that that's most easily done.
Thank you for that reminder. We talked about the safety in the tunnel before, or people in a tunnel.
Never.
No. But, all right. Okay. All right. We are adjourned.
Happy holidays. Bye. The last meeting.
Thank you.
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 Thank you.